Good morning, it's nine o'clock. We will call today's Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I'd like to ask everybody to please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act located here on the north wall of the legislative chambers. There is an automatic defibrillator in the room, back of the room, if anybody needs that for specific health reasons. And also, if you have a cellphone, I ask you to please turn this off or silence it at this time. With that, Mr. Clerk, if you're ready, we'll call to order the Board of Equalization meeting.
Commissioner Borgeson? Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Craft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, January 15th, 2019. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, February 5th, 2019, as the date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the Board?
Move the approval of item B.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Craft.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item C is citizens' comments. It's an opportunity to comment on Board of Equalization-related items not officially listed on the Board of Equalization agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'd like to thank Mr. Morgan for replying to one of my emails. And I'd also like to comment on my property tax. I thought I successfully lobbied and fought my valuation last year. They lowered it below $200,000 to $192,000, which was the previous year. And not very long ago, maybe two months or so, I did get my notice of that. Successful debate. And then, wham-o, last week, I get a card in there that says it went up $33,000. Now, go figure. In three months' time, it went up $33,000. I'd like to suggest something here that might be the problem with...you're going to hear this from a lot of people. It went up, my god, how much did it go up? If they take the measurements of my house from the sky, with the sky view or whatever, they're probably figuring square footage on the base of the property line foundation. That does not tell them anything about the square foot of living space in the house, which, up until recently, that's what it was based on. The recorded square footage of that property. Well, if you measure the outside foundation, you're going to have a larger square footage. But I can't live in that whole space, can I? So maybe your procedures should be changed on that. I do know that the inspectors can pull that up and look at your house from above. They can get all kinds of different angles. And I also know that some of the citizens' armies that march up the aisle here, citizens something or other, use that to inspect properties and go before you to fight for their cause. So I'm saying, slow down here. Find out why the values are not correct. If somebody does improvements in their house, you don't see that with your sky view. Maybe they didn't pull permits. If they did, maybe you didn't add that to the value of the property. Those questions need to be answered for the citizens. Now, since there is not an agenda, per se, other than citizens' comments and the opening statement, you know, I would like to protest that citizens' comment statement. I understand there's some resolutions coming up to change some rules today. However, that should also be changed because that tells me I could talk on all the topics that are not on the agenda because there is nothing, if you use logic. So that needs to be amended, Mr. Rogers, along with some of your other rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to item D, which is resolution approving the application of tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the Treasury. What's the will of the Board?
Move.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Duda.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item E is protest of special valuation for green belt disqualification for parcel number 0105040043. Mr. Goodwill.
Mike Goodwill, Douglas County Assessor/Register/Deeds Office. To refresh everybody's recollection, this is a parcel of, what, about 14, 15 acres? And we sent a disqualification notice because we think that although at one time the property may have qualified for special valuation, it no longer does. And Mr. Alvarez has protested from that determination. We had a lengthy discussion two weeks ago about the three means under which someone would qualify for special valuation. One means was having a conservation easement. There is none on this property. The second was to predominantly...or to be used predominantly for agricultural or horticultural purposes, which includes and means the commercial production of plant or animal products. Mr. Alvarez has told our staff that they haven't harvested anything from the property in a number of years. The third means to qualify for agricultural valuation is to be in a program, a federal or state program, in which the owner is paid to not produce anything and takes it out of production. That's not in play either. And so, that's where we are. I would like to take a minute to provide...I mean, a little...excuse me, Mr. Alvarez. I just want to provide some pictures. And I think we probably would have provided all of those to you in the book. But this, for example, is the view of the Alvarez home from the driveway. This is from Harrison Street looking north, and the house and the outbuilding are in view. Here is the view to the west with the neighbor's house in view where you can see...the Alvarez, we're at length to discuss the slope and the trees on the property. I think this is probably a pretty good view of it.
No, it's not. That's not the slope.
Okay. Here's another view of the property, this time of the view looking south. Here's a good view to the southwest where you can see the topography a little bit rolling. Here's the view north with the outbuilding and some more of the topography. And this is a sample that we have. What we're seeing is, yes, it has some hills. It's got some rolling topography. I think the Alvarez premise was it couldn't be anything but ag because the topography made it impossible to develop. And to develop, I'm not sure that's the case. But be that as it may, the purpose of our discussion here today is to decide the status question about whether the Alvarez should continue to get a valuation preference that aimed at predominantly agricultural production. And, you know, two weeks ago, there was some discussion about even whether to bring the Alvarez back. It may surprise you to learn, I was in agreement with Commissioner Boyle, that this property wasn't going to suddenly change from being a non-agricultural qualifier to an agricultural qualifier in two weeks. But nonetheless, I don't think anything has changed. This is a property that is not predominantly used for agricultural or horticultural purposes. And as a result, it should not qualify for the valuation preference that the state legislature has provided for predominantly agricultural land. So with that, I'll step aside and let the Alvarez speak their piece.
Thank you. Go ahead.
First of all, all those pictures...I'm Lynn Alvarez. First of all, all of the pictures do not show the steep grade. They do not. They do not show where most of the trees and the gully is at. And that's a good share of our property. So...and I do thank you for letting us come back and plead our case one more time, even though it's probably not going to happen. But I think that we have the right to come before you and ask you to take another look at things.
This ground, we've owned this ground for 22 years. It was in the CRP program. Then it went into the farm program where we received monthly, you know, yearly payments. And it's been out of the program for several years. This is agricultural land, and we planted over 200 blue spruce trees on this property over the years. We don't hunt, we don't fish, we don't do anything with it. As I mentioned last time, the letter came from NRCS stating that this is a highly erodible farm and it's under the Food Security Act of 1985. And they did a study on the property, and they said we were in compliance. And I just, for 22 years, I've never received anything from Douglas County as to what you expect me to do with this property if it's in the green belt. I assumed that it sits in the farm program, that would...it's...that's the way it is. We haven't done anything with it. We haven't...I mean, and the way I look at horticulture, that's protecting the ground. And I feel we've done that. We've protected the soils. You know, under NRCS regulations, we've protected those soils. I guess I can't say much more than that. You know, we're at your mercy.
Commissioner Duda.
Well, I think you just kind of answered the question. I was wondering what the steepness of the terrain had to do with whether or not there's any agricultural activity going on. If it stayed in the CRP, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
That's right.
Clearly, under the CRP, it clearly qualified. Once it came out of CRP, though, there's...I'm not seeing any justification for calling it ag.
But horticulture?
Vacant land, even with grass and trees, that's not farming. I mean, this is supposed to be a...
Protecting the soils, not...I mean...
No. Everybody with a lawn can say they're protecting their soil.
Well, okay.
Well, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, unless hills are very fragile and absolutely do need to be protected, no two ways about it. But that still doesn't constitute farming, so...
Well, okay.
Commissioner Craft.
And looking at the pictures, there's a considerable amount of that land that's not as hilly as Dundee appears to be. And Dundee does have some gullies. Elmer Park has some gullies. That I have to agree with Commissioner Duda. I would love to grant you the exemption, but I don't think in this case it qualifies.
And for what reason? Because we're not harvesting or drawing any income off the property?
Well, you have to be planting and harvesting something, whether it is walnuts, whether it is berries, whether it is trees or hay, alfalfa.
What about the trees we planted?
Have you been harvesting them?
Not yet, no. They were...I mean, we planted these babies.
Then you'll have to reapply once...you'll have to discuss that with Mr. Goodwill. I don't know exactly how that works with trees.
Well, I guess, my biggest concern is, you own property for 20 years on program. They boot us out of the program without any notice at all because they were looking at a house next door that was just being built, comparing my house to that, I'm sure, was part of the reason, too.
That still doesn't have any bearing on this...
I know.
...today's issue. Today's issue.
You know, but I just don't think it's fair that you don't...
It is, if I may, it's only our purview today to look at the issue in front of us today, just like a judge, you know, you brought up on certain charges, but he's not looking at other charges that are not in front of him.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, what's the will of the Board?
I would move to uphold the assessor's recommendation.
There's a motion by Commissioner Duda, second. Second by Commissioner Craft.
Motion passes six to zero.
Commissioner Morgan, you wanted a point of privilege before you adjourned.
Mr. Goodwill. For personal privilege, and you can stay there and correct whatever I say, and I'll respect that. I wanted to mention, and I see Doug Kagan here and also Chris Birbach, the fact is that on the valuations right now that are being sent out to people, those are kind of a moving number because I think by March 25th, you have to have final numbers. And we would see sometimes changes in those.
Yes.
And I don't know if people can contact you when they're seeing what's going on right now.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity, Commissioner Morgan, to put in a plug. By state law, we have to post the values as they are on January 15th. It's just a snapshot of where we are. They're called preliminary values for a reason. But what it does do is it opens the door for property owners to see that preliminary value and reach out to our office. We are currently taking appointments for people to come meet with their appraiser, and they can discuss their valuation. And if they've got information that they think is pertinent, a purchase contract, some kind of repair bill for some sort of interior condition issue we might not be aware of, anything, by all means, come bring it in because we still have the opportunity to change values. They become final on the 25th of March. And so that's what this is for. And I will say, last year, you know, we changed, we had to change an awful lot of values. People came in. Our appraisal staff was kept pretty busy from can't see to can't see meeting with people. But in the end, I think it did enough good so that the number of county Board of Equalization protests filed was about 3,100, which is the lowest number in a long, long time, especially when you consider we changed 100,000 value. That's a very low number in, you know, all things considered. So if you think there's...if you think there's a...you don't understand it, by all means, come in. If I may make one other suggestion for residential people, and that is when they go out to our website and they look at their property, up in the upper right-hand corner is something that we call our subdivision sales search. And I would encourage people to click on that link because what that will do is it will pull up sales in the last couple of years of properties of similar styles to theirs in their neighborhood. And we do that out of sort of an enlightened self-interest because sometimes things can break one of two ways. You know, either people see, wow, my value's way out of line compared to those sales. And it gives them further encouragement to come in and talk to us, and it gives them something they can point to. You know, nobody in our office is naive enough to think that when you're valuing 200,000 properties a year, you aren't going to miss some once in a while, okay? On the other hand, what it also can do is if you look out at your value and then you see a half a dozen sales, and your new value's kind of right in the middle of that patch of sales, and they're just like yours, the likelihood is that we're maybe more accurate than your initial reaction was. So by all means, look at your data on our site, make sure it's correct, check the sales, make a call, come on in, talk to our appraiser for your area.
And Mr. Goodwill, I brought it up because, and I don't want to get into a long discussion about it, but I think it's important for the public to be aware because we've all had some notices, I'm certain, and calls in the recent weeks. And I've tried to tell people those are not final numbers.
Right.
And if you look at it, and there is some discrepancy, and they show two bedrooms or three bedrooms instead of two, or whatever might be the case, that's when it's important to call the assessor's office, let them know of some misinformation. And I think publicly, this helps because of the television and the media being here.
Commissioner, absolutely. And, you know, as an aside, we don't get into the houses. I mean, nor do we really want to, quite frankly. But we don't get into the houses. And so if somebody's added an unpermitted bathroom, about the only time we find out about it is when they actually put it up for sale, and the realtor says, four-bedroom, three-bathroom home, right? And we look at the MLS and we say, now wait a minute, you know? And so that person purchasing that property may walk into a slightly higher valuation because guess what? You know, now their information is more accurate. But no, absolutely, you know, have people call, and they certainly have a right to chat with their appraiser about their property.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Craft, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Motion passes six to zero.
We now have the roll call for the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority.
Commissioner Borgeson? Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Craft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Noxious Weed Control Authority meeting held on Tuesday, September 25th, 2018. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, seconded by...
I just... I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Craft. Please vote.
Weed control's never been that controversial.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item two, is there any citizens' comments? Are there any citizens that want to comment on a noxious weed control-related item not listed on the agenda today?
Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. Good morning. I want to speak on something that's not on your agenda, and it's the soil. Apparently, you guys don't protect land when the property owners want to protect the soil. I think that the commissioners, you guys should be looking at that. If something comes to you and you have the opportunity, you should take the opportunity that the owners present to you at the time. Mr. Craft, you said that you wanted to do something about it, perhaps that you can make an exception. Just want to say about that, because if you protect the soil, you might be able to get rid of weeds at the same time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Item three is a resolution placing a special assessment on the property in Douglas County. And item four is a resolution authorizing the county weed superintendent to sign and serve notices on behalf of Douglas County Noxious Weed Authority. Is there a motion to approve three and four? Motion by Commissioner Craft, seconded by Commissioner Duda.
And I'd like to comment...
Please do.
That there are considerably less names and acreages on the weed abatement this year than in previous years.
Okay. There's motion, second.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item five, a presentation and approval of the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority's 2018 annual report for the Nebraska Department of Agriculture. Mike.
Mike, why are your numbers going down?
So...
Related to the stock market?
It's really related to, it's really related to the Douglas County landowners. And so...
I know, I'm just...
You know, it's...
Giving you a hard time.
We have programs in place, and those are really good, and those are proven to control the weeds and keep them at a level where we're not having large-scale impact to the economy and the ecology of Douglas County beyond. So it's really up to the landowners. You know, the saying is, good neighbors control noxious weeds, and that's really where a lot of the credit goes to. I've served as the county weed control superintendent for the last 11, 12 years now. This is my 12th year, starting here, as the weed control superintendent for Douglas County. For the audience, my name is Michael Reed, weed control superintendent. I wanted to provide the Board and the audience here a 10-year snapshot of the weed control program and how things have changed and moved a little bit since I started here. One of the first things that I'll tell you is that the State of Nebraska has added three noxious weeds since 2007, since I started. The first being a grass species, Fragmites. It's an aquatic grass species, but it's all over upland sites, terrestrial sites, as well as aquatic sites. Knotweed was added in 2011. And Ceresia lispidae in 2013. And I've got some pictures to show the Board, so you know what I'm talking about. This is on the Platte River. This is immediately downstream from Highway 92. If you can imagine, Two Rivers State Park would just be on the bank side, on the Douglas County side, and you have this giant mass of Fragmites, this common reed grass, in the middle of the stream. What Fragmites does is it narrows the channel of the Platte River and creates long-established sandbars. This ideally would be a sandbar here in the middle of the Platte River. And what our project on the river is every year is to target this species and control it so it can be a sandbar once again. Because what you don't want happening is this Fragmites narrowing the channel and taking away that recreation area from Two Rivers, taking away clean sandbars for endangered bird species. So Fragmites, when I started in 2007, was not a noxious weed. There's actually a big debate across statewide whether this should be a noxious weed because in the central part of the state, in Kearney and Grand Island, this plant in 2007 was dominant on the Platte River. They said, how can we even begin to control this plant? Well, we've proven over time since 2007 that if you chip away at it, it is manageable. In the lower Platte weed management area, we have 120 miles, and we're controlling, on average, one to two acres per river mile. You know, typically around 200 to 300 acres a year on 120 miles, which is a very small number considering the amount of accretion ground, the amount of river area that's in that. So we've proven over time that it's worthwhile investment to protect that river system. And we've had, I'll get to it a little bit, that the partnerships involved with this project on the river are really a success story in maintaining those achievements. This is a picture of knotweed. This is on Coal Creek. The headwater's at Coal Creek, not too far from my office on 93rd and Maple Street. This is roughly about 75th and Maple Street. You can't really see the creek because of the weeds, right? You can't see the...hardly see the forest for the weeds here. But this is knotweed. It's a perennial, perennial woody, woody plant, and it doesn't really produce by seed. This is called Japanese knotweed. What it does is, this is all done by roots. Comes up before the grass even, before the grass even gets started annually. And the threat with this is that it actually can cause, you know, what it's doing here in the riparian area, it's dominating the riparian areas, but also it can compromise infrastructure. This plant and its roots are so strong...I'll show you this next slide here. This is in the state of Michigan. It can actually grow through mortar and concrete. And this is a plant that if it gets into residential areas, if it moves from, moves off-site from, say, like a landscape area into the foundation area, it can really compromise the structure, which is really unbelievable, this plant can do that. But it can. Downstream from Coal Creek is that Nebraska Furniture Mart. On the Papio Creek, there is a bridge right there where this plant was growing, and so I made it priority to control that, control that knotweed there because it was a wooden bridge. You wouldn't want this plant exercising this sort of behavior on that wooden bridge there. So what happens every year in the Papio is that high-water events happen. This plant gets caught up in the high-water deposits on the banks and starts growing new patches on it. So we're always surveying for new locations of it. This is the third plant that was designated since 2007. This is Ceresia lispidae. It's another woody plant. It's primarily found in agriculture and hayed fields. And right now, there's no location of this in Douglas County, so we can all sigh, have a sigh of relief there. But it's also a big seed producer and hay contaminant, so we're always on the lookout for it. The partnerships help decrease the cost for the noxious weed program for the weed control authority and landowners. I mentioned the lower Platte weed management area, which we recently resigned an interlocal agreement this past May in 2018. And I want to recognize the Douglas County Attorney's Office, along with Lancaster County's Attorney's Office, for making that happen. Nine other counties are members with the lower Platte weed management area, in addition to Douglas County, including... to Douglas County, including Lancaster County. We've received funding sources the last three years from the State of Nebraska, Department of Ag. The three natural resource districts, the Papio, Missouri, NRD, Lower Platte South, Lower Platte North, put in $90,000 annually to this, to this project. And we also received environmental trust funds and some funds from Ducks Unlimited since I've started in 2007. So all of those partnerships have reduced the cost for, for landowners. Landowners have 50% cost share for managing those invasive species on the Platte River. It gives them incentive to control, control invasive plants on their own property if they have a stake in it. And just to give you an idea, the, for Douglas County, it probably costs around $10,000 to $20,000 a year for the noxious weed program on the Platte River. And currently, what Douglas County's input is, we have dues that we put into the lower Platte weed management area of around $300 a year, and we're gaining all the, all the benefits in Douglas County and then upstream, that 120 miles. And that's because of the partnerships, and it benefits the landowners as well. One of the things that I've, I've done the last few years with Fragmites is a do-not, do-not mow program with the Nebraska Department of Roads. Maybe some of you have seen these random do-not-mow signs on state highways. What we're trying to do is, is prevent the mowing of noxious weeds because it's a grass species and actually has roots that grow on top of the ground. And those roots, I'll show you my truck here. This is my county truck. What you can see here, there's like a, kind of a horse-shaped root, looks like a croquet, croquet goal there. The, that mower will come through and grab those roots and just spread it all up and down the right-of-way, so we're looking at, at preventing that. The State Department of Roads provides the signs, and then my seasonal staff just puts them in the ground, and we control it. And then the season goes by or so, and then it can be mowed again or replanted to grass. So we've had good, good success with that. One of the success stories without using herbicides where we achieved control is with leafy spurge. Here's a picture of it, and then here's a picture of it in a, in a prairie, in a prairie setting. Here's one of the biocontrol insects that we've used. It's called the Longhorn beetle, the Obraea, and what it does is it, it mines the stem of the plant, and actually, it's, it's, it's offspring will, will girdle the plant, girdle the roots, and kill off the plant. It's the most successful biocontrol. Not, not all, I'll preface this by saying that not all biocontrol is, is, is worth its investment. It's a slow investment. And where I've used it is in sensitive areas, in wetlands and residential areas. So we're not using the use of herbicides in those areas where you don't want to have any negative impacts. The other species we've used is the, is the flea beetle, and it's really tiny, about the size of a flaxseed, and it's a defoliating beetle which, which will eat the flowers and leaves of the plant. Give you an idea of where we're using this, one of the sites that we use the biocontrol insects, this is a wetland. Immediately north, north and west of here is Linden Estates, and so this is a wetland on 132nd and Dodge Street. And this leafy spurge was growing in between all those evergreen trees there and going down the banks into the wetland, and so we didn't want to use any herbicides. The use of aquatic herbicides would not be desirable in that case because you have all those grasses and trees in there. So we released all these biocontrol insects, and we achieved control on that leafy spurge without it spreading up and down Dodge Street and spreading into the wetland, and had a success, success story there. So we're always looking at different tools that I can use, different tools in the toolbox to control noxious weeds, so. With that, I would like to recognize Kent Holm and his direction and his leadership. Since I've started here, he's been a good resource for me to use on different projects, and he's always encouraging his staff to be proactive and take a look at their programs. I'd like to recognize, as I did before, the, the County Attorney's Office and Lancaster County Attorney's Office. And the last that I want to recognize is the GIS Department, which they developed a mobile platform for my seasonal staff to go out there in the field and do all of our inspections and, and legal notices, so they've been a time saver. Like to recognize them as well.
Seeing? No questions?
All right.
Oh, Commissioner Borgeson.
Just one quick one out of curiosity. So if you treated, say, the ones along the river, so you, you do your spot for the year, do you have to go back to that every year, or can you move to the next one?
You're talking about the Fragmites control?
Mm-hmm.
Really, Fragmites, it becomes like a historical site, so typically, you can't get control on it in one single year, so you'll have to go back maybe one, one additional year.
Okay.
And then the roots can go 10 feet down, so we're always looking at revisiting those sites, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Is there a motion adjourned? The noxious weed. Motion by Commissioner Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
You may approve number five.
No, I think it's just report.
It's his presentation.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I think we need, let me back back. We need officially approve five. So is there a motion to approve item five and adjourn?
Yes.
We are ready to vote number five when you all are. Motion passes six to nothing.
We're called to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is minutes and claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held January 15th, 2019. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, January 29th, 2019. What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve A and B.
Motion to approve A and B by Commissioner Kraft, seconded by Commissioner Duda.
I'll be abstaining, because there's a check to my company.
Seeing nothing else, please vote.
Commissioner Morgan abstaining. Other commissioners voting yes.
Item A is consent agenda. There's 13 items. Note that we need to pause item eights to vote separately. There's an ax for a two-week layover with that. Marcos, do you want to note your correction to letter E?
Yep, will do. Get on the microphone. You talk? Okay. Marcos C. Martin, Douglas County Labor. So I have an amendment to consent item E. It is a labor contract with type 71 general. The only amendment that I have on the floor today is, in the contract itself, I just need to switch out with the clerk page 33 and 34 of the contract for a new page 33 and 34. Commissioners, you have a copy of that. All, the only change to it is adding in occupation code 119, purchasing specialist two, with a nine-step pay line for each of those in years 18, 19, and 20, and that is my only change.
Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions on a couple of items listed here. One of them is on item G, the approval of amendment two. And I, I believe Sherri Glassnap is here. I just wanted to get something in the record relative to what we're doing with the Region Six agreement, and I'd ask maybe if she could give us a quick update on that. The reason I, I pull this out is because obviously what we're doing on mental health is one of the front burner issues for Douglas County. I, I think made a point of pointing out the crisis that we have with the lack of long-term mental health care facilities in Douglas County, and, you know, obviously, we're all working to maybe make that better. We work in conjunction with Region Six on this, and this falls into that wheelhouse. It's definitely something that's, I think, a front burner issue for all of us in Douglas County. We're fortunate to have our Director of Community Mental Health here with us today. So I just ask you to maybe give us a little background in, in where we're at on this.
Sure, absolutely. Sherri Glassnap, Director of the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center, and I have with me Pallan Atkins. She is our fiscal and contract analyst and keeps track of, I apologize, keeps track of our Region Six funding for us. The region does budget adjustments approximately four times per year, and that's based on the current spend-down from your contract. So as you can see, Pallan handed you the information, and I have one here so the public can see as well. The amendment to our contract allowed for increases due to our spend-down in those categories: medication management, acute inpatient hospitalization, outpatient therapy, intensive outpatient, and then our chemical dependency assessments. So we were ahead of our contracted amount, and they provided in this amendment additional funding for us.
Okay, so if I...
I'm not contagious, I promise.
We're all suffering with the winter cold. If I understand this correctly, we were allocated a certain amount, and we expended more than that amount on, on these categories, and this is an attempt to reimburse us for the overage of $185,000. Is that kind of right?
That is correct.
Okay. The categories that we have here, medication management, acute inpatient hospital, outpatient psychotherapy, intensive outpatient and assessment, don't cover what we were talking about before in terms of long-term mental health, inpatient care. Is that right?
It does not. We do not provide long-term care such as the Lincoln Regional Center at, at our facility. We are licensed as a hospital for acute psychiatric care for term stabilization.
Right. And just so that, you know, everybody's continually aware of this, we're not getting placement at the regional center for people who come to us and request those services because there's a waiting list at the regional centers. Is that correct?
That is correct. We cannot always get individuals into the regional center. Sometimes there is a very long wait. We were successful with getting a female in probably a month or two ago. She had been with us for approximately two months, and we have currently one person on the waitlist.
So we have talked, and I know that you're working on this, about the idea of what would it take for us to maybe supply some of that service locally, both from a space point of view and from a personnel point of view and from a budget point of view. And I think I've requested of you, you know, give us some idea on that. Where are we on, on working up something to just kind of ballpark? What, what would it cost for us to provide some long-term inpatient mental health care needs in Douglas County?
So in addition to your request and the email response that I provided, I've done some additional legwork. Currently, the regional center, their reimbursement rate, I got from Tamara Gavin from the Department of Health and Human Services, and it's about $568 or $578 per day per person. Acute psychiatric inpatient, right now, what we're reimbursed is a little over $750. The cost analysis that the state engaged in indicated that acute psychiatric inpatient really, truly should be reimbursed at a little over $1,000 per day per person. So trying to drill down into the numbers, the number of individuals that the region within our county area, the five regions would need for regional center beds, is something that we're still working on, if that's something the commissioners want us to look at. I was very interested yesterday at our Board of Trustees meeting when Joe Lorenz talked about the amount of funding that our county, I believe, and Joe, please correct me if I'm wrong, is sending to the, to the regional center for the rest competency evaluations and, and restoration for, for those individuals. And, you know, so that, you know, gets me thinking, is there something that our county could be doing in regard to the intercept with criminal justice and mental health? Repurpose those funds, keep them in the county, which would then free up regional center beds because the individuals that are waiting in the criminal justice system get priority? Would free up those regional center beds for individuals needing behavioral health care? So there's, you know, there's two different approaches that could be utilized to possibly help rectify the situation. Historically, before behavioral health reform, and I'm a significant supporter of behavioral health reform and always have been, it's the money didn't follow the people into the community to provide us with the services that we adequately need for those individuals. But we truly were able, from a hospital level, to get individuals into the regional center for long-term stabilization much quicker than we are now. Our systems, none of the area hospitals, I guess I can't speak for the other area hospitals, I don't believe that the Community Mental Health Center is set up right now currently for long-term behavioral health care for these individuals.
And that's really kind of the crux of the problem. There is no long-term inpatient mental health care available in Douglas County.
Not since the reduction of the regional center beds. We used to send individuals to the Lincoln Regional Center and to the Norfolk Regional Center.
So looking forward, I mean, this is a problem that we're, it's not going away, and we need to deal with it. It's real, and it touches a lot of people in our community. Are you aware of the bill that's in the Nebraska Unicameral Legislature this session to raise the cigarette tax in part to fund exactly what we're talking about? I don't know if you've had this legislation reviewed or if you're aware of it.
I have been studying the legislation and, and looking through it. I apologize, I left my notes back at the back of my chair. So not only do I think that the bill to help increase the tack, the behavioral health services in general for a rate increase, because all behavioral health services right now, based on the cost study that they did, are underfunded, not just acute, it's not, you know, it's, it's all levels of care in our community. So I think that's very important. I looked at the section in regard to, that indicates a certain percentage of the funding would go to correctional facilities for medical care. I think that's absolutely imperative. I, I really like some of the, the models that provide intensive mental health care for people in corrections, intensive mental health care, and then step-down units as well for those individuals who can't be served safely out in the community. And then, of course, am interested in what things would look like if there was additional funding for mental health, a community mental health center, and how we would structure that and what that would look like. Our current facility wouldn't provide the adequate space for long-term care in regard to what you would want to look at for staffing, what you would want to look at for space, and I am very big in regard to making sure your design of your unit is trauma-informed and that there is enough outdoor space, especially when individuals are placed someplace for a long period of time, where they can truly have time out, outside appropriately.
So in that bill, in addition to the correction set aside that you're talking about, there's a specific set aside for counties with health centers like ours.
Correct.
And how would that...
I think that's 4%.
I believe that's correct. And if memory serves me, you know, that would be a significant amount of money. The, the yield on cigarette tax varies over time, and depending on usage. This bill is a little different because it encompasses some new tobacco products that weren't there the last time that the cigarette tax was enhanced, and so it's hard to calculate exactly what that 4%, but it would probably be in the seven figures range, and, you know, that would be a significant increase in our ability to deal with this. Would it be who of us, you, Douglas County, to support that legislation in anticipation of one of the big problems that you pointed out? We don't have the capacity, and we don't have the money to fund the capacity right now. Should we support that? In your opinion?
My, my personal opinion is that I would support the legislation because I think there's several things in it that could have an impact on our county. What I would, on the, on the flip side of the coin, is if the county is looking at doing something that potentially would be additional services that down the road, there are not enough, there's not enough funding for, I think we would have to work very closely with some of our stakeholders, such as Region Six Behavioral Health Care and the state. We'd have to have members involved that look at what type of things that we are trying to develop and what's the long, long-term impact on the county for that financially. I am always for doing everything that we can do for the individuals of, of Douglas County. the citizens of Douglas County, especially the underserved. I want to make sure that we have risk management involved and legal involved. I think we learned a lot from the detox program and taking over that program. I still think it was the right thing to do, but there's been a significant amount of challenges to that. And so, if we were to do something, I would want to make sure that I had a team that could look at developing something appropriately because I know that it's not something I can investigate on my own.
Right. So, and I think that makes a lot of sense. What I might get back to you on is we have a committee on this topic, and we might want to hold some hearings to talk about exactly what you're talking about. We need to develop this plan to outline how we go forward, both in terms of resources and space and personnel holistically to move this at all. Otherwise, it's not going to happen, and we'll sit where we are, which is zero long-term mental health care beds in Douglas County, which is totally unacceptable. We can't stay where we're at. We must move forward. So, I'm just giving you kind of a heads up that we'll probably, I'll be calling on you to, you know, maybe more definitely put this in the form of a plan so that we can follow it going forward. I think that you have a very good idea of, you know, what we have, what's wrong, where we should go. And it's just a matter of planning your work and then working your plan. One of the probably first steps would be maybe talking to the legislature about this initiative, which specifically references funding specifically for entities like Douglas County, specifically to do these activities that you're talking about. And we can talk about that. I think we have legislation on the agenda later, so.
And I think involvement with Region Six Behavioral Health Care because they really, truly have had a lot of vision of things that are needed within our region. And so, I really enjoy working with Patty Georgovitz from Region Six. She's very innovative. They've brought on Vicky Maka for the stepping up initiative, and she's very innovative as well. So, I would, if our county were to do anything, and as I've said in the past, I will always follow the instructions of the Board of Trustees and the Board of Commissioners, I think we would need to move in parallel with the region. I think that would be imperative.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Craft.
The regional center is operated by Region Six or whom?
No, the region center is operated by the state.
Okay. If we were to do anything, I do believe it should be totally funded and operated by the state, just like the regional center.
That's another avenue that can be...
And I want to point out that you used the word "trauma-informed." And we're using that with the Juvenile Justice Center. And I just wanted to point that out to the public. So, thank you.
I have no appetite for getting into a new field that's a state responsibility. Every time we do that, that's a tax shift to property taxes. Every time the state says the counties are going to do something we've done historically, that's a tax shift to property taxes, like probation offenses that used to go back to prison, and now they go to jail. State doesn't pay for it anymore. Now, it's a county responsibility. That's a tax shift. The state has been shifting taxes to us, responsibility to us, for so many years that now 48% of the three-legged stool is property taxes. For us to say we want to take on something because the state is negligent in its duties, but they'll give us some funding. How many psych programs, how many mental health programs do we have where we're a partner with the state? Do we ever break even on any of them?
We do not.
No, we never do. They're a lousy partner, and they're not doing their job. And I have no desire to step in on the back of Douglas County property taxpayers to start taking on a state responsibility just because they won't. This is coming at the same time that the state, with their 3.1% budget increase, is saying, "Counties, you can never increase your budgets by more than 3%." We're going to get throttled back potentially so badly by the legislature that these criminal justice needs that are such a huge driver in our budget, 2/3 of our budget is criminal justice, I have no appetite for taking on any more programs just because the state won't do their job. They're a lousy partner. We have a bad history with them. I have no appetite for entering into a new, very expensive field that we aren't mandated to do, that the state should be doing. And frankly, you've done a nice job. You've got seven bosses, and that puts you in an awkward spot when one boss starts telling you what to do. You answer to an entire board. You are great at being sensitive to what we say. But I think we're putting you in an awkward spot when one commissioner starts telling you we're going to get into this program and figure out how to make it happen. The carry, I mean, we'd lose our status, the IMD issue, the, I mean, there's so many reasons we should not be doing this. We can't afford it. All we're doing is bailing out the state while they're being punitive to us. Thank you.
I agree with what Commissioner Craft and Commissioner Duda has said. I think we have much better pathways to be taking than getting into another program that we aren't mandated to provide. Does anybody know if the 4% that's talked about in some bill that's down there is ongoing? Is it one year? Is it specific to only this or that? Again, that all sounds real good to be handed a potful of money, but there's also ongoing costs for years after that. And the ongoing costs are the most expensive, and that is the staffing and the facility. We couldn't do it at our facility right now if we wanted to because of that IMD, that Institute for Mental Disease issue. We can't have more than 16 beds. This service is paid for by Medicaid at this point. That is a state responsibility, not a county responsibility, and we have to be aware of that. Again, we, you know, we're going to have to have some deep conversations about the detox program. It's not a mandated program, and it's costing us. We do not, and should not, I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner Duda, take on another state program or responsibility and pay for it with our local taxpayer dollars. Not fair, not going to support that. And you are right that we don't need to be starting and go rogue on another committee trying to solve long-term care or any mental health issues without the input and actually leadership of Region Six because they are the behavioral health authority of this region. And they've done a great job of bringing in many programs and getting us funding to provide those programs. So, you know, I have been involved in mental health, and that's my passion, and we've done tremendous things. But I am not going to sit here and take on a state responsibility and let them off the hook again. They, again, have shifted their responsibility down to the counties. We are actually feeling it because a lot of these folks are ending up in our jails. So, in a roundabout way, we are tackling the issue in our jails. But to build another regional center, Commissioner Craft set it right on. It's the state's responsibility. The state should build it. The state should run it. The state should fund its ongoing operations.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah, I have read LV 710, and it has enacted in law permanent, as permanent as taxes are, increase in the cigarette tax in Nebraska with dedicated funds to counties to deal with this problem. I don't think that we should do nothing. I don't think that we should walk away without even looking at legislation that would provide us with resources to do something, and I won't. So, regardless of what the board says, and I'm not telling you to do anything, I'd suggest that you maybe read the legislation before you go off and decide that you don't want to participate in a state-funded tax increase on cigarettes to allow us to provide some minimal long-term mental health care in Douglas County. I'm going to push for that, and I think this is one vehicle that allows us to do that. We have a legislative discussion later on. I think LV 710 certainly should be on there. And before you probably decide whether or not you want to accept these monies, you might actually read the bill. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Worf, sorry.
Well, and I plan to read the bill. And, yeah, it is good. And the problem is, is that we need to go back and look at jail reimbursement. That was a promise by the state to pay for inmates, and that was taken away. Every county-state aid program that the state did for counties was wiped out in one full swoop, one year. Just need to be cautious about that, is all I'm saying.
Okay. With that, I'd like to add item J5 to the items to remove. I need to abstain on that. With that, is there a motion to... Okay, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
We have another item on this agenda, which is item D, resolution retroactively appointing county commissioners Mary Ann Borgerson and PJ Morgan to the Douglas County Unified Justice Center Development Corporation Board of Directors, Joe Lorenz as the corporation's treasurer and Diane Carlson as the corporation's secretary. This appears on our agenda despite the fact that these people have been serving on this corporation for months and months. I think probably in part because there was a robust discussion last Thursday in this chamber in front of the Building Commission regarding the fact that there's no action by this board to put anybody on this private corporation. So, I want the public to be aware that this is going on. There's not been any discussion of this. We haven't taken any committee time to discuss this. The private corporation is in the process of spending your money. It does not have the same interests at heart that the Douglas County Board does, and people serving on both boards have an apparent conflict of interest because the private corporation is essentially a private corporation. And it serves the interests of those people who are profiting from the private corporation. That's the duty of corporate board members. This is a public corporation. Our duty is to the public, and you cannot serve two masters. So, you're either a Douglas County board member and serving the public, or you're a private corporation member doing business with Douglas County and spending our money and serving your shareholders. You can't be both. This is a wrong way to go. We discussed this at length when the Public Building Commission turned down their request for $120 million worth of public funding last Thursday. And it's part of a growing discussion that we have in the community relative to the right way to go on our juvenile justice and courthouse needs. So, I think that we should, at the very least, lay this over until Commissioner Boyle is here to participate in this discussion and that the public has some idea that it's coming up and that we are retroactively putting not only publicly-elected commissioners, but compelling staff to do what we've, at least a couple of us have compelled them to do now for months in terms of serving this private corporation. And so, I'd motion that we take item D off the agenda and lay it over for at least one week.
There's no motion, motion dies.
Could I ask him a question?
Commissioner Morgan.
I just want to ask you a question. Could you explain how the members are profiting? I heard you say "profiting." I just want to know how they're profiting.
This corporation is made up, and, you know, I don't think that the entire corporate board is even part of the public discussion here because it's not attached to the resolution. People out here are going to have a difficult time finding it because it's not subject to the open meetings laws. This corporation is controlled by private entities. Those include Burlington Capital, HDR, Peter Kewitt and Sons, Barrett Home Law Firm, who are going to profit from the expenditure, if this thing goes through, of a lot of public money. Simple as that. That's the purpose of the corporation, is to spend this money. The corporate board contains these people. And my understanding of corporate directors' duty is to serve their shareholders. It's a private corporation, not a public corporation. We're a public corporation, not a private corporation. Can't serve two masters.
It was a kind of a simple question.
It's kind of a simple answer.
I'm sorry. Ben Gray also serves on this as a member of the city consul.
Hey, that's not going to happen. Let me make it clear to the audience that I'm not going to have that this year.
When you said that the board members, which would be myself and others, Mary Ann and some of our staff, how are they profiting? You said they're profiting. I'd like to know how I'm profiting, just a simple question, or how Mary Ann's profiting? In other words, profit means I'm gaining something. And if you can tell me how that is, I mean, the reason it was formed was to raise money from the private sector, which I think there's been some commitments and more coming. But just tell me how we profit. Do I get a percentage of those donations? Am I being paid something? That's all I want to know.
Right. I think it's difficult for the public to understand what's going on in this private corporation because they're not subject to open meetings, open records, laws. And so, what they spend and how they spend it is not public. But the duties of directors is to serve the shareholders, is to serve the corporation. Duties of the directors of this corporation is not the same as the duties of the county board members that we swore to uphold when we took this office. They're in conflict. There's a conflict here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. You just mentioned, you know, that it's not open. I made certain that it is an open meeting, I made certain that it is an open meeting, and I want that clear, that they all are open meetings, period. And that was done by that board some time ago. And Mary Ann Borgerson, Commissioner Borgerson, you correct me if I'm stating anything inaccurate. All those meetings are open and anyone can attend and have attended in recent times, period. But I don't like someone saying that, you know, we're profiting or I'm profiting from something where I'm not. And I know that the Accountability and Disclosure Commission is looking at this now and we're awaiting their decision. So, I just want the record to be clear on that when a statement's made about profiting.
And that's a good point. Perhaps we should lay this over for the Accountability and Disclosure's opinion on relative to exactly what you just raised. I mean, I'd amend my motion to say, let's do that. There's no rush to do this. You're doing a retroactive appointment as the resolution states. So, obviously, the train has left the station some time ago. You're just trying to retroactively do what maybe you wanted to do in the beginning. I don't know. But why don't we wait until the Accountability and Disclosure decision comes down? How about that?
Okay.
Would you be in favor of that?
No.
Why not?
Well, I'm going to cut this off. There's nothing new coming in this. So, we have the consent agenda with the removal of H and J five. Got a motion, a second? Please vote.
I would move for the approval of the consent agenda with that amendment and with the removal of item H and J five.
And, Commissioner Harrison, I'm going to...
Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Craft. Commissioner...
I'm going to abstain on this vote only because K is a reappointment by the mayor of Jay Lund to the Metropolitan Transit Authority, and he is my stepson. And I thought it might be best to just clarify that. Otherwise, I would support all of them.
Would you like item K pulled separately? Voted on separately?
Okay, that'd be fine.
Okay, then the maker of the motion also is deleting item K.
Thank you, clerk.
Along the same lines, I would like that item relative to this private corporation, item D pulled separately, so we can have a separate vote on that. I'm going to vote no.
That noted by the clerk. With that, we have the motion of second by Commissioner Duda, second by Craft with the removal of G, H, J five, and K. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Is there a motion to move to approve item D?
So moved.
This is a motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Craft. Please vote.
One moment, please.
This is the, sorry. This is the item that I objected to relative to the appointment of Douglas County Board members to the private corporation, along with directing staffs to serve as secretary and treasurer of that.
Please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, all their commissioners voting yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion to lay item H over two weeks. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, second it, someone.
Is there, can I ask for the reason?
I got asked by legal counsel to lay it over.
Oh, I see. Second.
Second by Commissioner Borgson. Ready?
I didn't know that.
It's one week or two weeks?
Two weeks. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero. J five is a...
I would move approval of item J five.
Is there a second? By someone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. Motion by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Okay. Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers abstaining, all their commissioners voting yes.
I would move for the approval of item K, the appointment of, reappointment of Jay Lund to the Metro Transit Authority.
Motion by Commissioner Duda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Craft. Please vote.
And Dan, I already stated why I'm abstaining.
Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan abstaining, all their commissioners voting yes.
Item three is recognition and proclamation. It's a resolution welcoming Shenyang Performing Arts to Douglas County for their performances on February 2nd and 3rd of 2019 at the Orpheum, and recognizing its inspiring journey through 5,000 years of Chinese cultures. There are motion by the board. Motion by Commissioner Borgson. Second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item four is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioners related items now listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments?
Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. Commissioners, I want to speak on your agenda, item D, retroactively. Since it's already been passed, I think Mr. Kavanaugh brought up very good points. So, some of my comments are directed to the county attorney. Last, in 2017, articles of incorporation were filed for the nonprofit that now is running the development of constructions for the juvenile justice, excuse me, for the Douglas County Justice Project. That's in 2017. What's going on in my mind is this board is trying to tell the public that that's okay, that that is proper and effective, and that you're not, that the board members are not profiting from this, that it's a public interest, a public good. That's what we're told. But yet, the public's telling you that that is not a public interest. Discussion on this matter should be continued, and it's unfortunate that it's not. You want to talk about profits simply, Mr. Morgan? That's not the entirety of the conversation that we want to have. It's unfortunate that profits are what matter. And you're saying the board of the nonprofit is not profiting? Okay. What I'm saying is that the board of the nonprofit and that organization serves as a entity instrumentality of the board now that there's an agreement. There has been an agreement. Borgenson and Morgan serve on the nonprofit board. Fine. Okay. Nobody's going to pull you out of those seats on the board. But for other matters, are you continually going to be going with that arrangement where you're going to just push some papers and say, that's, that's good. That's good for society. The Open Meetings Act that the county attorney is designated by law to be looking at and enforce speaks to public bodies. And one term in that provision, excuse me, let me find it real quick, is in item six, instrumentalities exercising essentially public functions, which asks the nonprofit having that agreement and essentially functioning as a committee to this board. So, it should be open to the public? And this talk about arrangements, and it's a profit, nonprofit, not-for-profit, we're not profiting, that's, I think, aside to the real concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. You might not like what I'm going to say, but on a day when the Omaha World-Herald has the headlines about Americanism Bill in the State House, and striking things such as the word "Americanism," and what we've heard just this morning, it seems to me that your role as a governor for the taxpayers in the state, in the county, is maybe a little short of being constitutional. If you think real simply about how the commissioners that went to form the Articles or the Confederation and led to the Articles of Confederation, which led to a Constitution, they had input from citizens. Some of them rode back and forth on their horses to get input. Some of them went back and talked to the citizens in the town square or in the taverns. But we don't get that here. And I happened to go online last night and see that there are some rule changes to be maybe discussed today. I can't comment on that because it's on the agenda. And that's why I maintain that your rule as printed on this handout today needs to be changed. It's nonsensical. It's non-representative. And then I'm going to say something that you won't like, but it is a matter of public record, because I did attend one of those public meetings on the ninth floor. And when I brought up the fact that that morning I heard on the radio talk show program a person say that there are certain people maybe profiting from this, he didn't say "private corporation." I had to find out that myself. But when I brought that up in that meeting, public meeting, and the World-Herald was there, I asked him why they're not reporting on it. This was some time ago. Guess what happened? Mr. Ben Gray almost took me out of the room himself. I left the room, and then he had a public interview with the news station out in the hallway. Guess what I saw on the public news that night on maybe Channel 6? I don't remember. But oh, yeah, that white guy said something about me or my family might be profiting, and I consider that racist, quote-quote. You can go back and look at the record if you still have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, we'll go on to item six, which is a public hearing, and it's a public hearing that has been already open and that we're continuing. Let me know for the record, it's been brought to my attention that the, is the person applying for it here, by chance? Okay. So, this is the situation. The person's done everything, but they don't have an application, they don't have a notary sign. They did everything, but now they don't have the notary sign. That's why I was asking if the person's here, because if that's the case, they can simply go in and have Sharon do it. But the person's not here. So, would the board like to keep it open one more week? Okay. So, we will keep the hearing open, but I'm going to ask, while it's open, is there anyone here that would like to comment on that item? Seeing none, we'll keep the hearing open one more week and go on to committee discussion. Item, item seven and letter A is the Finance Committee, Commissioner Morgan. It's asked presented. Okay. We'll go on to child new services. Item one is the monthly Douglas County Youth Center report.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd like to start this morning. Ashley Farren, she's been kind enough to come up and present. She works with Dust to Dawn. They've been at that for about a year. And they recently went through a process of evaluating that program with input from the kids that had participated in the program. And so, I thought it would be important for you to hear just what they found out. I think you'll be encouraged. So, I'll turn it over to Ashley to start.
Good morning. Thank you for having me back again. I'm handing out just a little bit of data that we've pulled from our experience at the Douglas County Youth Center this last fall. We were lucky enough last summer in July to pilot the program. Oh, I'm sorry. Ashley Farren from Nebraska Medicine.
Go ahead. No, you're good.
So, like I said, we were lucky enough to pilot the program over the summer and get some feedback from the DCYC staff to make sure that it was a right fit for education and violence prevention for the youth at the center. And we were, we came back in the fall and went through the whole entire, all the units again and touched with all the youth again. And so, here is a presentation of just kind of the statistics that we pulled that was surprisingly very positive, not surprisingly, but it was very positive, and we were very happy with the outcome of it. And this is a small number since it was only our one run of the program, which we will be going up and again this next month, we'll be hitting all the youth again. And so, just a breakdown for you, the top line is just demographics. Kind of gives you the breakdown of male, female, race, ethnicity, the age group. And then, we did do a little bit of that financial checking. Obviously, these youth don't know what their family income is, so we did the reduced lunch and free lunch. And so, you can see some of those statistics there. Alarmingly, there's quite a few kids, and Mr. LaFlore had, had told us this is expected, that, you know, there are a large amount of children that aren't living with their mothers and fathers and their parents. They're with either another family member, foster care, detention center, a youth facilitation of some sort. The second line looks at kind of some information that this was from the actual students themselves. This is a self-proclaimed. If they've had previous violence or an injury from violence, about one-third of them had said they'd actually been injured from violence in the past. But 78% have lost family or friends to violence. And this is definitely the population that we're looking at to kind of touch and try to hope to intervene and challenge that thought process when choosing violence in their life. Drug and alcohol abuse, we did do that. And again, that's a self-admitted. And then, when we looked at the gang involvement versus the gang activity or hanging with gang members, and so, this was an interesting find, is that 33% admitted to being a gang member and 60% admitted hanging out with gang members. And it was a complete flip opposite, that the 33% that did not admit to hang with, did not admit to being a gang member said they hung out with them and vice versa. So, it was a very even split there. And so, this is great information for us when we're having these conversations with the youth. We are not an anti-gang program. We are an anti-violence program in simulation with U-turn in here in Omaha. We do a pre and post survey, and we're looking at that change of kind of attitude. When you're looking at a prevention program, it's hard to have hard statistics. Are you making improvement? Are you changing? So, our goal was to look at that attitude and kind of challenge again that thought process. And so, we are very happy to see that before the class started, we had them answer questions, and then after, we had them answer the same questions. And we do have a little bit of discrepancy because there were a handful of students that did not want to fill out the paperwork, which is voluntary. But we did find some of the big stuff is that my family expects me to hit them back in a fight. And so, overall, our whole entire program, we look at this, but this statistics is only for the DCYC youth. And we had a 13%, excuse me, a 14% decline before and after the class. And so, what we know for the Dust to Dawn program is what we're seeing overall in all of our students that are coming through this program is that violence is starting in the home. And so, we are planning on tackling that at some point in the future and seeing how we can kind of handle that and bring the parents in in the home environment. The second one is that you will lose respect if you don't fight back. And as you know, that respect is a big obstacle. It is subjective. And so, we did see a shift as well. 13% said that, that they can walk away from a fight basically without losing respect. And that's our goal, is for them to choose different alternatives than to physically fight, assault, or use a weapon on someone. And then, a positive one is you can talk your way out of a fight, and that was an increase of 14%. Again, we thought that was very great percentage change. We're looking at a population of only 55 being surveyed. And so, when we look at that bigger population, when we look at the whole entire class with DCYC and outside of DCYC, we do see that change as well. I think one of the biggest things that we take away from this evaluation is at the very bottom, how could Dust to Dawn help you once that class is done? And across the board, we see the same thing, is that these students want to talk about it. They want to talk about what's going on. They want to talk about how they're feeling, their choices, what's going on in the home, the school, and their environment. And so, again, we plan to dive into that a little bit more in the future. So, just a little bit of an overview for you. Again, we found this is very successful. We're very thankful for the partnership with the DCYC, and the staff there have been very supportive, and we hope to build and build onto this and create more. I will say overall, for the Dust to Dawn program as a whole, the first year we launched was April 2017. From April to December, we saw 67 students. With our partnership with the Youth Detention Center and our outside programming, we saw 300 students last year in 2018. So, we're again hoping to grow that and hopefully touch some more lives. Any questions?
No, this is good. Oh, sorry. I forgot. Commissioner Craft?
Okay. The Dust to Dawn program started in 2016, and how many students?
In April 2017. From April 2017 through December 2017, we saw 67 youth.
Okay. And last year, you saw?
300.
300, okay.
Yes.
Dust to Dawn, these are the young people who are being kept on monitoring devices in their house?
Dust to Dawn is a voluntary youth violence prevention program with, outside of the Douglas County Youth Center, they are brought into the hospital through community-based organization partnerships.
And Commissioner, that was the video that we provided.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you. I needed that time.
At the Med Center.
Okay. Yes, okay.
I'll bring coming back.
Yes, I needed that kick.
Yes. And so, as our partnership at the Youth Center is that we created that video since they cannot leave the facility. So, we brought the experience to them by having the video.
Okay. The next question is, this program's been around for a little over three years, right at three years, right? Right at three years, right? Are we following up with these young people to see the results a year or two later?
So our, again, prevention is hard to monitor. When we have youth come into this programming, we don't have a robust way of keeping in contact with them. They come and go through programs, they move locations. And so our hopes is in the next five years of the program, we can start looking to see if we can run them through potential juvenile justice system, whether we run them through the trauma registry at the hospital, that they're not coming back as victims of violence. And so again, prevention is very hard to monitor.
Okay. And how many days are the young people or the students in the program?
This is a one-time program. It's a two and a half hour one time.
Two and a half hour, thank you.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
You're good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. What you're doing.
Thank you. All right, I'll move on to my report. And then I'll turn it over to Greg. So if we could, you've got the handout in front of you, but if we could start on slide number four, please. So we were asked to provide some highlights from 2018, so I thought I would just share what we presented to Ms. Bia. But so in 2018, we had, we implemented two online computer programs to increase the credits that the students receive through the Douglas County Youth Center. Those are Acelis and Edgenuity. Acelis is, they're both exceptional. Acelis allows, those kids actually have an opportunity to take tablets onto their units and continue to do the work that way. In addition to that, we've introduced two new assessments to help us to identify grade level and course level for math and English. We use Acelis for math and Plato for English. And I think all of this has contributed to what I consider to be a great success in terms of the number of credits that the kids received this year, and that is 899, which represents the highest number of full credits that we have, that the kids have earned in the last 10 years. So I'm really, really pleased with the work that our Education Department has done and certainly the work that our, that our students have done. We constantly are trying to engage families and work with them. We wanted to increase the participation with the parent-teachers conferences. We knew that we were creating an additional obstacle. There was an additional trip that the parents had to come up to participate in that. So it was decided to try to tie that parent-teacher conference either before or after visitation. And we've seen the participation increase significantly. We're typically seeing 25 to 30 parents showing up for a parent-teachers conference. I think a lot of it has to do because they don't have to make an additional trip down to the Youth Center. We had a career fair in September. We had over 15 organizations to show up and spend some time with the kids talking about how they can plan for a career and the different opportunities that would be available to them. And of course, we have yoga. All the students are now working or participating in yoga. We had a couple of nationally-known authors show up and spend time with our young people. Dust to Dawn was implemented over the beginning of last year, and you just heard about that. As was U-turn, the home program. Certainly would like to see it used more, but we did. 133 youth were referred and 126 were accepted onto the program. And that saved us 7,600 detention days over the course of 2018. Moving on to the next slide, slide number five. Again, the parent-teachers conferences. We did one this month, January. We actually had 34 parents show up to participate in that conference. And we will be doing that again in April. The next slide, September. As I mentioned, we did the career fair. 14 participants came up and spent time with our young people. We had Goodwill. We had AIM, which is Career Planning, Urban League, Gateway to College, and then a number of construction employers, just to name a few, that spent time with our young people. Slide number seven. The Foster Grandparent Program. I think we're making progress now. We've, there's a volunteer that has been identified. They're going through the screening process. The MOU is complete. It hasn't been presented, but hopefully that will, that will be taking place here soon. The next slides, I wasn't sure if we're going to have Ashley up here to present on Dust to Dawn, so that's the information that I prepared for you. So I guess we could move to slide number 14. So the average daily population for 2018 was 78. The average length of stay remains fairly consistent at 50, but I've got some more information that I think you'll find interesting regarding average length of stay here in the next two or three slides. 923 kids were admitted into the facility. That's down a little bit from previous years. Actually, I think that's the lowest number of admissions we've seen since, this chart goes back to 2008. Moving on to slide number 18. Length of stay. Again, that 2015, 2016 where it really starts to tick up pretty significantly, that's when we had decided that we would remove the kids that were with us for less than 24 hours. We felt that statistic had a lot to do with improving case processing. And we thought that those kids that were with us less than 24 hours, that's probably not what that, that statistic was geared towards. And so we removed that. And of course, that was going to impact length of stay, and it did. It showed that it was going up, but it had more to do with the way we were tracking it than anything that the system was doing. The next slide, 19. These are the kids, again, that are, that were with us over 24 hours. We're going to add a column over here, too. You end up with a lot of numbers that are representative of each individual month, but you don't really have an annual thing. And so next time, you'll see an additional column to the right that shows an annual basis. But what we do know, and it's not surprising, the kids that are in adult court stay longer than other kids. The kids that are in, that are not on probation, they stay. They don't stay quite, they stay a little bit longer than those that are on probation. The next slide is, has to do with those youth that are with us less than, less than 24 hours. And this slide is a little bit different from what I sent to Sharon. Mark and I spent yesterday kind of cleaning this up. We saw some problems with it. So the number, the number of juveniles not on probation, those numbers that you see under each one of those months, those are actual kids. That's not number of hours. Those are the actual number of kids that showed up who were not on probation. So you see 13 in January, and then it's not three in December, it's 36. And so with the probation kids, very few kids that violate probation are going to be with us less than 24 hours if it's decided that they're going to, that they violate a probation. They're typically going to stay with us longer and go back to court. And there may be a revocation hearing that'll take place down the road. The kids in adult quarter usually going to stay with us longer than 24 hours. But overall, those kids that are staying with us less than 24 hours, you see the numbers, and again, we'll, we'll average those out for you going forward. But anywhere from 4.1 hours in January to, that's actually 3.8 hours in December. And we took all of this information and we, we calculated the length of stay to include everyone that has actually came into the Douglas County Youth Center in the last 30 days. And what we found was our length of stay when we calculate it that way is 15 days. And so that's a statistic. I think Commissioner Borgson asked that we do this and then, but we continue to track the information that we had previously so that we can continue to see that trend line going forward while we're starting this new data to see where that takes us as well. Slide number 22, admissions. Again, I think it's always important to point out that that legislation that passed the beginning of 2015, that required that Class III and IV felonies start in juvenile court. They didn't have the discretion to start them in adult court. They had to start them in juvenile court. So if you look down that row for pre-trial, you see the drop from 2014, which is 228, to 73 in 2015, which would be expected due to that legislation. You also see the pre-adjudicated tick up a little bit from 2014 to 2015. And then as we move forward to 2018, the pre-adjudicated admissions dropped 4%, while the pre-trial, which is going to be the felony convictions or admissions, increases 63% during that same timeframe. We can move to slide number 24, please. So this is just more specific information about the data on slide number 22. But delinquents, those are the kids that are in juvenile court. Status offenders, we haven't had any status offenders since 2013. Then misdemeanors and felonies. The felonies would be those youth that are being tried in adult court. Again, you see the decrease from 2014 to 2015, and then the subsequent increase since that time, up about 62% since, since 2015 when that legislation changed. And then on to slide number 28, please. So these are the reasons that our kids came into the Youth Center in 2018. 51% of them came in on new charges. 22% on unlawful absence, 15% on violation of probation. Both of those are probation-related, so combined probation would represent 37%. And then you can see the numbers for juvenile court holds, failure to appear is for both juvenile and county court. The next slide, I started to get, seemed like I was getting really carried away with this slide. I just, it seemed to just continue to grow because we had so many ties when we got to that 10, and I didn't know where to cut it off. But we're just, we're just going to cut it off at 10. But those, the top 10 offenses for new charges coming into the Youth Center represents 84% of all of our admissions. And so in 2018, the charge most frequently brought into the Youth Center was robbery, followed by gun charges, assaults, domestic assaults, terroristic threats, receiving stolen property, theft by unlawful taking, receiving, oh, I'm going to have to look at that. I think I clearly had done something wrong there. I got receiving stolen property, showing up twice. So I'll go back and see what I did wrong and get that corrected. Possession of controlled substance, sexual assault, burglary, and attempted burglary. The next slide is admissions by race. So in 2018, we had 450 African-Americans admitted. That was 49% of all admissions. 223 Caucasians, that was 24% of all admissions. 203 Hispanics slash Mexican, that is 22% of our admissions. 25 Native Americans, which is 3% of our admissions, 15 Asian. And that would represent 2% of our admissions. On to slide number 32, please. The home program. So we, as I mentioned earlier, we accepted, there was 126 admissions into the home program in 2018. 65 of those were successfully completed, and we averaged 22 during the course of 2018. We have 29 today. It seems like the admissions are increasing, which is good. I'd like to see that program used more. On to slide number 34. And this has academic credits earned. 899, again, that's the most full credits that we have, that our students have earned in at least the last 10 years. So I think that is just fantastic. Slide number 36. The kids that come to us with individual education plans. So we had 155 kids that showed up at the Youth Center with IEPs or Individual Education Plans. 103 of those youth had been with us previously. So that represents the recidivism rate of 64%. Slide number 38. We had eight students graduate in 2018, which is, is down from previous years, except maybe 2016. But again, I think more importantly, is the number of credits that they earn. I mean, that's the one that I pay most attention to. It's always nice when we have an opportunity to allow a kid to finish out while they're with us, and we bring in their homeschool, and we have a ceremony, and it's, it's great. But that's more dependent upon where they're at academically when they show up at the Youth Center. But again, the 899 credits earned is really, really significant. Slide 40. Medical and mental health contacts. You can kind of see, in 2012, when you really see the mental health contacts go up, that's when we were, Region 6 allowed us to bring on one LMHP. And so they went up significantly. Prior to that, it was just a psychologist working part-time, just a few, a few hours a week, really. And then you see the numbers go up again in 2014. That's when we were allowed to add a second LMHPs. So really what that tells me is the need has always been there. It was just a matter of our, us having the ability to meet or serve those kids that needed those services. And then again, it goes up in 2017, and that's when we were allowed to add a halftime or a third LMHP, and you see the numbers go up again. Slide number 42 shows the youth that were admitted that showed up at our door with some sort of a prescription medication and identified there the psychotropic stimulants, antidepressants, anti-anxiety, anti-seizure, asthmatics, and diabetics. What we're going to track to, we'll continue to provide you with that information, but I thought you might be also interested in knowing the specific diagnoses for the youth that showed up. And so beginning in January, we're going to start providing that information and tracking that as well. So you should be seeing that in future reports. Sexually transmitted diseases on the next slide. 527 youth were tested in 2018, 61 tested positive. That's 12%. Clearly, we still have work to do. It's encouraging that that's the lowest number that we've seen since 2013. And so hopefully, things are moving in the right direction. And then on to slide number 45. If there's any questions, I mean, if we can do that now, or we could allow Greg to talk to you as well.
Commissioner Crowe.
On slide, on slide 40, you talked about the LMHP, which is licensed medical.
Yes.
Health professionals, right?
Yes, yes.
You know how I feel about acronyms.
I do, I do. I apologize.
That's okay. You said we were allowed two. How many do we really need? Any idea?
I think the three. Adding that one that was working with the kids in the evenings was really, really helpful.
Could we use another one?
Sure.
That'll.
I thought that was.
That'll be addressed in that Craden UNMC program.
That's what I thought. And that's one of the programs we're planning on adding, should we be successful with our desire to have a combined center there. Then I noticed that, I lost the slide already. I noticed that also the medical and. And pediatric.
Pediatrician.
Pediatricians. On that same slide earlier, the numbers kind of wavered. Were people seeing the medical and pediatricians instead of the LMHP?
Yes. Prior to us getting the LMHPs.
Before the LMHPs, as Brad alluded, we had the psychologist who was primary. The pediatrician is actually from UNMC. We have a contract with them. They are, every youth that comes in, that's there for at least 24 hours is seen by the medical staff. The pediatrician is at the Youth Center on Mondays, and the pediatric nurse is there on Wednesdays and Fridays.
Okay. And going back to the students. And going back to the students earning credits. Now, this may seem like a dumb question, because I know how I would feel earning a credit. But I'm not a young person anymore, and I haven't been in trouble, and I haven't been incarcerated. Do they shrug off earning credit, or do they take pride in it?
Oh, they take pride in it, absolutely.
Good, that's what I was hoping, but...
And our goal, as it always has been, is to make sure that the kids leave better off than when they showed up.
And how are we doing on advancing reading grade levels?
Continue to do well. They're, if they're with us for 30 days, their reading levels oftentimes go up at least a whole grade level in 30 days.
Thank you. No further questions.
Brad, page 20. That kid, the top kid, the juvenile that's not on probation, that's the kid referred to as the county kid when we talk, because they're not on probation, they're there, and if we had a way of managing them like probation, we may be able to find services to get them out. Is that that kid?
Those are the kids that are showing up with new charges.
Okay. Not on probation?
Correct.
But it's, so with those... Is that still the county kid, if you know they got new charges, that kid that...
Yep.
It's not, okay.
That's county kid.
So, okay, got it. Thanks. Okay, Greg.
Thank you, I'll turn it over to Greg.
Good morning. Greg Headburn, Expediter Transition Specialist, Douglas County Youth Center. Got the monthly report for you all. Couple of things that I wanted to really highlight and hinge off of what Brad mentioned earlier. One thing is that, excuse me, is that there is an increase in the daily population. As of January 25th, we surpassed the 80 mark, and today we're at 88. And there are a couple of reasons that we kind of nailed down as to why, and I was able to confirm with probation as well, and we're on the same page. So the majority of the reason is just for the felony adult charges is a crux of what we have. We have 15 that are there for violation of probation. We have eight that are there for either juvenile or adult capias or failure to appear. And then we have three that are there on marshal holds as well. So the majority are in there for new charges, and then with an uptake in the adult court charges, they're going to be there for a little bit longer. Now, we do have two that are earmarked to leave tomorrow. We have one also, actually, we have three that are waiting for Interstate Compact. So as soon as we get that, they will be out as well, too. And then we had three that came in yesterday that, and I wasn't able to see their charges, but there's a possibility that they would be leaving as well, too. So we could possibly, as soon as tomorrow, be trending downward in the lower 80s. So there is a little bit of ebb and flow to it, but that's the crux of the reason as to why. Couple of other notable things on here is a couple of kids that are in there, the ones who are, who have ran away, a lot of them is from placement. So those capias that are out there, we're finding that a lot of them, when they're coming back to us, being picked up, a lot of the reason is, what I'm talking to them about, a lot of the reason is just inconsistency with the placement that they're at. So it's just a variety of reasons as to why these kids are leaving their placements, not feeling comfortable there, and you know, understanding that they can just go to a different, to... The ability for them to be able to leave is just, it's more fluid there. That's the crux of what it is. What we're looking at for the future is with the comments, I think we're going to kind of break down a little bit more for you all, and itemize those a little bit more, and we'll do the same thing as the charges as well.
Commissioner Craft.
Yes. With the young people who are unhappy with their placement and leave and come back in, how is placement determined for them? By the judge?
Determined by probation, ultimately by the judge. Different recommendations that may come from the evaluation as well.
And does the person or agency that they're being placed with come and interview them first so they can feel comfortable or more comfortable going into the situation?
Quite often, and then our LMHPs as well do a good job of gathering information. Myself as well gather information to be able to relieve some of the anxieties that they may experience. So there's some of those things that take place on the front end of it. A lot of times, sometimes kids will just sabotage themselves, sometimes kids just don't want the treatment. I've dealt with kids who have gone throughout the treatment, and they get towards the end where they know they're going to leave, and then they'll sabotage themselves. So there's just a variety of reasons.
Because they want to stay in?
Either they want to stay, or they're just fearful of when they get home, going back into the same cycle.
Into the same violence or same... I recall when I was on the city council, talking to a young person who wanted to stay in because home was violent. Home was loud, they couldn't study. Here, they were allowed to study and read. At home, you don't need to know how to read. Get out of the house. And that's sad.
It is.
And, yeah. I can see that person's individual desires, more comfortable because they're not subjected to the anxieties and violence and shouting and fighting and hatred that might be felt to them or that they may feel to their family.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan.
I just want to say that, and some of the families work quite hard to accommodate their returning youth. There's quite a bit of cooperation that goes on as well.
I'm sure of that, I just realized that once in a while, there's the unique individual who finds it more comfortable there. I don't know if that's happening now, because it was a long time ago I was on the city council, and everything's changed.
We've been pretty fortunate to receive support, and it gives us the ability to provide a variety of different services for our young people. You yourself, for years, have been providing magazines that our young people take advantage of. So the, I guess the best way to say it is, you know, a lot of our young people come in with a variety of different challenges, and we're really, we're really doing our best to address their needs while they're there. And probation, they, their role is to do their part to make those connections as youth return to home on probation.
And I'm glad you brought up the magazines. I have a bunch, Sharon has a bunch for you. And anybody who subscribes to magazines. If you want to drop them off at my home, drop them off here, give them to, I believe any commissioner would love them. We don't get enough for the youth. They like to read about current events, about who's in the news, who's the sports figure, who's the Jeff Bezos or any of the people that they look up to. Any TV star, especially if it's on the cover, it attracts your interest, and that helps them learn to read.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, and you know, I know you're all working hard to do all that you can to get them back into society and on the right path. The 88, you said, was the daily population on, in the last...
Today's population.
Today's is 88. And yet, when you look at the admissions, which was page 30 of the report, it showed, you know, that admissions are down, you know, continue a good decline. I mean, if you look back 10 years, 8 years, whatever, you know, we're down 50% in admissions, but yet we haven't been able to really reduce that number of daily stays there, which is kind of frustrating for all of us. So, you know, we want to welcome your suggestions and ideas and continue to work toward the solution, because as Brad knows, we see other places where they run at much lower numbers, whether it's Maricopa County in Arizona, or Minneapolis, or St. Paul. They run much lower than us with a lot more population and gang problems, especially Maricopa. But anyway, we thank you for the presentation and Brad's report.
Thank you.
Yeah, please.
So for the month of January, there has been increase in admissions as well, too, which may not be reflected, but that would be a little bit of the contrast that you spoke of.
Commissioner Borges.
I just wanted to report two things out. One, as, when Brad was reporting out about individualized educational plans, and I think you all remember when there was Dyslexia Awareness Month, Clarice Jackson appeared before the board for us to pass a resolution on that. It got me to thinking about having further conversation about that, and had a conversation with Senator Luanne Linehan, who actually was instrumental in passing LB 1052 regarding schools having to screen for dyslexia upon the school year of, start of school year of 2018. That got me to thinking that those individuals that are in our youth center that are coming in with IEPs, we should be asking and having that questionnaire filled out and tagging that or redlining it to say, okay, if the questionnaire is positive, then we should be bringing in somebody like the Clarice Jackson's nonprofit to do the screening for dyslexia and get the kids started on their treatment program. So she's going to come next month and present the dyslexia information, and then we'll talk about how we can, because it would be no cost to us, because there's a revenue offset, because that can be billed for the educational dollars. So anyway, we can talk about how we can start doing that at the youth center. Again, just, I mean, when you look at it, the number of kids that are coming in with those IEPs. Secondly, Levon Stennis had commented and asked if I would host a meeting over at the youth center. She actually provided gift cards and pizza for parents of children in the youth center that came in. Greg and Mark were in attendance when we did that Saturday. And so basically, what we did was have a conversation, have them tell us what they were feeling and what was working, what wasn't working, what the need was. And we're putting together the comments from that, and we'll share that with you when those are complete. It was interesting, to say the least, and actually empowering for them to speak with each other during that, which I don't think had happened in the past because they were experiencing a lot of the same issues that the other one was experiencing, and that person could really understand. So it was a very successful meeting. We talked about how to continue this, and Greg is going to work with Brad and Mark to have a parent kind of support group, if you will, every month on a monthly basis, and have them come in, whether it be an evening where it's better for their schedules, or whether it's a Saturday, again, we did it 10 to 12, so that they can, again, invite more parents to the table and talk about those things and give each other support. So again, I thank Levon for providing the gift cards and the pizza. I thank you guys for being there, and it was just very, very well attended and interesting to listen to what their comments were, and we'll be sharing that, and excited to start that support group every month for them there at the youth center. So thank you for being open to that.
Greg, let me ask you, explain, I was writing down, I know you went into, so today's 20... Explain the 88 today again, how you did, because I missed some of that, writing something down. Because when you look in the report, this time of year, it looks like for the last couple of years, there's a trend up and then it comes back down. So just explain to me that explanation you gave again, because I missed some of it.
Indeed, so there's just been an uptake in population for the month of January thus far. And you're right, it does trend. Over the holidays, from between December to the end of January, there typically is an uptake, whether it's youth being out of school, things that are happening, you know, throughout the course of the new year, over the holidays, kids wanting to be home, so they run from placement. I mean, there's just a variety of different reasons that can cause that uptake.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Borges.
Wanted to mention that when you start to do those diagnosis, you might get the pyramid that corrections uses. It's a real good graphic to use on what those diagnoses are. And then when you do the graph for the two different ways we're counting the average length of stay, can you combine both of those graphs on one page? So have the top one be the kids we don't count, and then how we count everybody?
Yeah, I sure can.
Okay, item H is the Human Resources Agenda. Item one is the Weekly Personnel Report, that is submitted. Item two is Legislative Issues. We'll go one by one, and then I'll turn it over to you first, Commissioner Borges, on each one. Item B is the Discussion Action on Legislative Bill, LB 20, Require a Vote of Approval for Public Building Commission Bonds. I'll comment on that. I went, there were several people there for the hearing. I was there on the opponents. Commissioner Kavanaugh was there on the opponents. There were some testimony on it. And so I brought this forth to the board, and I think it's in our interest to oppose that. And if anybody wants to say something. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks.
There is a comment from the public, too.
You can, you can come. So you, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Good morning, Doug Kagan, speaking for Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. We understand that commissioners differ on the merits of LB 20 to require a public vote on public building commission revenue bond issues. However, acknowledging defeat of the Justice Center Expansion Plan at the recent Building Commission Meeting, we believe that publicly opposing this bill will only appear abrasive to already mounting public opposition to your plan. Therefore, we urge commissioners to take no position on LB 20. Regarding LB 103, this bill automatically would reduce the county property tax levy as valuations increase. So if valuations increase overall by, for example, 7%, the corresponding levy would decrease by 7%. The board could vote to raise the levy, but they would have to face the wrath of the taxpayers. Favoring this bill, we believe, would show county board empathy for property owners who this month, once again, faced sticker shock on their valuation increases. Thank you.
You can, you can, I'll let Commissioner Kavanaugh speak, then you'll speak. You can go.
Where confusion starts. I don't believe under the rules, he should have been up here. He's entitled to be, should be, because he's a citizen. But according to the rules as written, that topic was on the agenda, and your rule says you can speak on topics not on the agenda. So you know, you need to write those rules a little more clear.
Larry, hold up.
Thank you.
Hold up, let me be clear. You've been wrong the last two weeks on this, so I'm going to want to correct it.
How was I wrong?
Listen to what I'm saying. If there, if you come to speak under public comment, per legal advice and the open media law, we can't talk back to you. Say, no, listen to me, I listen to you, listen to me. If an item's on the agenda, the public gets to comment on it. This item was on the agenda. Any public person can comment on that item, so... So, for the record, your copy, it's out there. But I, I am, I am so sure of this that I don't know what more I can say.
Please read it yourself to the public.
Okay, I read it every, I read it every, I read it every two, every week.
Thank you.
Larry, Larry, Larry. I sent you an email this morning, I think about five-thirty, and I said to you that when citizens, it's on.
Okay, that's okay.
I said, when citizens can talk about whatever matter, then their time's limited, we don't respond. And in that email I sent you, and you're welcome to give it to Chris Burbach, I stated that if the item is on the agenda, citizens can comment about that, and I believe they have five minutes, they can make a statement, and then a commissioner can respond to that item on the agenda. So, you are welcome on any item on the agenda to speak to it for five minutes, and then we're able to comment back and say, here's why we think it's this way or that way. So, that's what I stated.
And I thank you for that.
Come to the mic if you come in.
And I thank you for that, because you're the only one that.
But that's what Chris.
What I'm trying to point out clearly here is, maybe I did not read your reply to my email. I had that composed a couple of weeks ago. What I'm trying to point out is, if I had a copy in front of me, I would read it to you, but I'm not supposed to read to you. What it says is, this is your time, citizens' comments, five minutes, but that time was already passed.
Right, but.
You were on to the other items, and then the rest of your statement, as printed, says, citizens can comment on items not, clearly not, on the agenda. Do you not understand?
At that, at that point of the.
You need to point that out? You need to clarify that or strike.
Okay. Let me, let me get, I don't, I don't know how much more we can get on that. And Mark, if you're trying to do that.
That is rule specific. That is rule specific language.
Okay, with that, are we on LB-20, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Okay. The LB-20 has to do with the bonding authority of the Public Building Commission that acted last Thursday to deny the hundred and twenty million dollar bond proposal that the private corporation that we discussed earlier was proposing. And it basically brings bonding authority of this particular entity in line with bonding authority of most public entities, and it's a trend that's going to eventually encompass all public bonding authorities. Last year, LB-1000 extended this same principle, and basically, LB-20 does the, the same thing that we, as Douglas County and the city of Omaha, are compelled to do with our bonding authority, which is submit it to the people for a public vote. That's something that we have been talking about, and I particularly think is a valuable asset in terms of building a public consensus for the expenditure of public money and the resulting impact on the property tax owner's tax bill. It invites people to participate taxation and representation, which is the most American of principles in the establishment of major projects. We most recently sought and received voter approval in every precinct in Douglas County for our 2016 public safety bond proposal, as did Omaha Public Schools for better part of a billion dollars worth of bonding authority for much-needed renovation and expansion of our schools. That's the public policy behind LB-20. That's why I testified in favor of LB-20. I think that it's an important initiative, and I would propose that we support that We're just talking about that one bill right now, right?
Right. That, I consider that a motion, and that dies.
There was a motion to oppose already.
There was not. There hasn't been a motion yet, so.
Oh, I thought you made it.
No, I was asking for it. So, if, I will, let me, but I'm assuming that that, you're making a motion to support it.
I'd make that motion. We're going to make motions on all of these.
We're going to officially, we're going to officially pass positions on them, yeah.
Yeah.
So, there's a motion on LB-20. Is there a second? That dies for lack of a second. Let me respond to that, and then I'll ask for a motion to approve that. The point that Commissioner Kavanaugh makes is totally inaccurate, comparing this to put this in line with borrowing authority from other entities. The one thing that he uses as an example, and is just totally different, is that, one, there's only two entities in the state that have this authority. It's Douglas and Omaha and Lancaster and Lincoln. Lancaster and Lincoln have used this in the past, and nothing has been said. Now, I'm not as experienced as a lot of people here in politics, but I know that nothing happens in this world by accident. And so, when you compare other bond issues, the bond issue that we passed a while ago, we did that on our own because it was just ours. The building commission can be used for joint municipal pieces, and because the courthouse is an extension, it falls under the building commission, and it's an added way to finance. None of the other entities that are compared to this have that, and it was specifically put in place to do that. So, I don't say that to contest, I just say that as the fact. And with that, I'd like to ask, is there a motion to approve LB? There's a motion by Commissioner Kraft to support it.
To approve.
To approve what? I mean, to oppose it. Sorry.
I'm sorry, to oppose.
Yes, sorry.
I'm sorry, to oppose LB-20.
Commissioner Kraft, motion, that is their second, to oppose, second by Commissioner Borges. Any more discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you.
You can come up if you're on twenty.
Regarding LB-20, that's quite accurate, that this is the first time that we have tried to use this authority here locally, and everybody says, what are you doing? There is a re, this is not a loophole, as some people have called it. This is very intentional, that the legislature gave us this authority when they created us. That's what the building commission is supposed to do, is supposed to encourage working together anyhow, and having an adequate courthouse. I have heard all seven commissioners up here say repeatedly that they support expanding the courthouse. They've recognized why the courthouse has to be expanded. I do not understand why we support giving up this ability to address these problems ourselves, to take responsibility for the basic functions of county government. Somebody, someday, I hope, will tell me, if this ends up going to a vote of the people, and we have seven commissioners that say, this has to happen, and we have the judiciary saying, this has to happen, and the people vote it down, and we say, too bad, it has to happen. We have to grow the courthouse. It's not like an arena convention center. It's optional, it's elective, you want to do that. We have to have a courthouse. This is one of the most basic functions of county government. And the easiest thing that we can do is to kick this can down the road yet again, and that's exactly what's happening here. It's going to be sixteen months before we would have an opportunity to put this on the ballot. And somebody's got to let the voters know, if they vote it down, what is Plan B? What are we going to do if the voters say, we don't want to grow the courthouse? We have a very proficient disruptor in our midst, and this has made this whole thing so chaotic. I take nothing for granted. I do not take for granted that voters are going to approve expanding the courthouse. We're going to be found in contempt of court, I fear, in due time, if we don't eventually address this. There is a seventeenth district court judge coming through with a bill right now. I hope the county board recognizes, this is not the building commission's responsibility to say where that judge is going to be, where their court, that's the counties. If they give us a seventh juvenile judge, don't look to the building commission to come up with a magic formula saying, here's where we can make a courtroom. It's not the building commission's job, it's the county board's job. Where are we going to put that seventeenth juvenile, district court judge? Where are we going to put the seventh juvenile judge? Kick the can down the road for another year and a half and say, your call. We, we, we don't want to take responsibility for this, we would prefer to pawn it off on somebody else. Please tell me what Plan B is if the voters vote it down. Do we just exist in this courthouse forever and say, nope, can't grow it, voters said no, even though we have the ability to address this problem, we don't want to do it ourselves? I, I, I think it is ridiculous and nothing but political posturing to say that we want to oppose having this kind of authority. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft, and then you can come, and then I'll go to Commissioner Borges.
Yeah, Plan B is not Commissioner Kavanaugh's plan, because that, too, would require a vote of the people. That, too, and a tax increase. And the reason there'd be a tax increase, we were able to pass the last public service bond, public safety bond, because we could promise no tax increase. If we take out more bonding authority, we cannot promise no tax increase. The tax increase is going to happen, it's time to bite the bullet. Now, the other thing is, of course, Kavanaugh's Plan B is done without a tax increase, I'm sure.
So, I'm going to, I'm asking everybody to keep it on LB-20.
Okay, I'll keep it on level. It's time to bite the bullet. We lost the public safety bond the first time. We lost it. School districts have lost bonds many, many times. OPS lost a bond issue. What do we do if we lose, as you say? And it won't be on for sixteen months. Now, there is a more expensive way to do it, much more expensive. We contract with a private entity on a lease to own. City of Omaha has done that with fire engines when they didn't want to pass a bond. The, a, a city did it with a sewer system when the bond failed. They had a private entity come and buy and put in and install the sewer, and then leased it back for thirty years at probably twice the cost. So, that's something we can do, and if it requires a tax increase, that tax increase does not have to go to the vote of the people. So, what is there to misunderstand? We've been misdirected, we've been lied to, we've been confused as to what the issue is. The issue is, we need to build a courthouse, and we needed to do it years ago. Now, we have to stomach it. Now, we have to bite the bullet. Now, we have to take responsibility, and it is our responsibility, and I don't want to be responsible for this failing. I believe we need to go forward. This is a lot less expensive and more immediate than the alternative of rent to own, lease to buy. And that definitely is in our purview. And I'm going to talk for five, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes, just because I can. I like, I decided I like hearing myself talk today. So, I'm going to talk and talk and talk and talk. I hope nobody minds. I'm going to repeat myself thirty-one, thirty-two times. We can do a much more expensive way of building and achieving this goal, and that's lease to own. We can do a much more expensive lease to own option. How, how many times do you guys want me to say it?
I think you made your point.
Okay. Okay, I'll be done then. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Minutes five eighteen, North Fortieth Street. I haven't, I wasn't able to go to the last meeting the Public Building Commission had. What I did was go on the website, on the public commission website. It is lacking in information and access. Perhaps that's a frustration that here, people here in Omaha have with the Public Building Commission. I don't necessarily understand all the things with the tax increases, but the bonding authority, I've seen some of the video, and it seemed like there was good public discussion with the Public Building Commission. If the members of the Public Building Commission are committed to providing information to the public, have it readily available, that might be a good thing to do, especially with this controversy concerning the Douglas County Justice Project. Amy Melton, on the public, a public building commission member, said that she didn't have all, she didn't have her questions answered. So, at that time, I feel that the right decision was made, to not approve bonds for the project. She had questions. Brinker Harding had questions, and Mike Boyle felt that the public didn't have enough information for this decision to take.
Louis, I hear you. I just, I don't want to relitigate the Justice Center. This is just about the bond authority, so I'm actually.
Yeah, that, that's specifically what the agenda item was.
No, it's not about the center. This is a separate matter. And so, I'm just asking you to keep it in there, because I don't want to relitigate that now that's been talked about.
Well, to some, to summarize it, I basically, I basically do support the current arrangements with a joint effort between the city of Omaha and the county with the purview that the Public Building Commission has. So, I, LB-20 seems like it's not a, a good solution for, for what is being discussed. Thank you.
Anyone else on LB-20? Commissioner Morgan?
I just want to mention that there are two subdivisions of government that have to approve this, that are all elected, the city council, the county board, and the mayor, before it would be approved, the bond. And, you know, you, you would have that election cost, it would be during, I guess, the congressional election, not the city, because you wouldn't be covering the county, or you'd have to do a special election. Secondly, and you said it, Commissioner Duda, all seven of us have said that we need to build the new Hall of Justice. Without question, county attorney in five different locations, people like almost in the hallway, so on, the probation and some of the other items. So, there's just been a lot of misinformation. I can think of the last email I got in the last twenty-four hours, and the comment was, do not build the hundred and twenty million dollar jail. I mean, you know, it's sad, because the youth center, I believe, is close to the thirty million dollars in costs, and we've already seen that there would be a donation to that, the program and the building of ten million dollars total to be given. And some others are looking at it also, and that's what the 501(c)(3) was formed for. So, you know, it, I think the right thing to do is maybe call for the question on this LB-20.
Okay, I don't see anything, there's a motion, a second, please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Okay, let me, this is all listed together, but there may be opinions on different ones. So, what I'd like to do is, if everybody's all right, can we take LB-fifth, LB-550 and LB-522 together? I'm assuming the board is in approval of those? Hearing no disagree.
Though we're opposing.
Okay, that's right.
And LB.
Sorry. So, let me go, but that's a simple one to go through. That's a simple one to go through. Let's, these should be simple for approval. So, is there a motion to approve LB-550? That's.
Commissioner?
Marcos, come on.
Excuse me, Marcus C. Martin, Douglas County Legislature. So, the first, the first set is, is a, are the resolutions that, I guess, my impression for the board were to oppose. So, that list, LB-20, 103, it's. So that list, LB twenty, one oh three, ETA, five fifty. The second resolution on are a list of bills that it's my impression to support. And so that, that list is two thirty-seven, two four seven, five twenty-two, and five eighty. It's just five eighty was late to the table.
Right. Um, so, and I got the order, so thank you, thank you. So does anybody have any other disagreements on the remaining ones to oppose, which are LB one oh three? L, L, and LB needs to be changed to LR. Um, LR eight, um, c two and LB five fifty. Commissioner Kavanaugh had his hand up, then Commissioner Morgan.
I'm, I'm sure folks out there in viewing land and the audience are confused because I do this for a living and this is confusing to me. But what, what we're doing here is, if you haven't seen the agenda, incomprehensible to you because you haven't seen the numbers that we're talking about, and there's no explanation beyond the cursory one-liner of what any of these bills do. So, you know, what we would normally do, what every organization I've been involved with does, is to take bills one by one, maybe have a legislative committee discussion on each of them, even include the entire one-liner, which is not included here. It doesn't show who any of the sponsoring senators are, part of the one-liner. And then have an informed discussion in public about the bills. We're, we're not doing that. We're doing a lump sum here with some numbers thrown out and no explanation, explanation to the citizens beyond what you heard on LB twenty, which was brought up by me because I testified on the bill and you got some background on it. You're not getting any of that on any of the rest of these. I'm not going to participate in this. It's a charade. Uh, I'm going to abstain on these positions because they're not informing you about anything, and that's not right. If we were going to do this, we should do it in an organized fashion, public hearing, public awareness, public input, and then take an informed decision. That's not happening today, and so unless or until it happens, I'm not going to participate in this charade.
Um, to the, to my good friend from District Four. You've been on the board four years. We've done this way for four years. You get a report that gives detailed examples, so you not having that is wrong, but you jump ahead and kind of understanding about what wants to be done. So ideally, if the board moves to put these into a motion, a second, Marcos will have the opportunity to clear up anything that anybody has. So you don't want to participate, that's fine, but just for the facts purposes, no. That's the process. Commissioner Morgan?
I was just going to ask Marcos a question. LB eight.
Well, let me ask this too. If, if everybody's in agreement with that, I'd like to motion all of those in to oppose, and then I can let Marcos go through it and you can ask any questions on those. Is that fine? Is there a motion to oppose LB one oh three, LR eight c two, and LB five fifty?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan.
I just wanted to ask a question. On LB eight CA, Marcos?
LR.
LR, I'm sorry. Could you just comment on it for a moment?
Can I have, can I have that on? Okay. Uh, sure, Commissioner Morgan. Um, so LR eight CA, that is the constitutional amendment, um, I guess, component to LB one oh three, meaning those items are related to each other. LB one oh three would require some type of constitutional amendment. And so LR eight CA is that, um, I guess, bill that accompanies LB one oh three, if that, if that makes sense. It, it, it provides the percentage per constitutional amendment for the, um, essentially like your property tax carryover that's allowed in the next year.
And I thought.
So they are related to each other.
And is that the governor's proposal that he talked about on the, that your taxes, unless you just purchase property, could not go up more than three or four percent is what he suggested?
Yes, that is accurate. Both of those are, have been filed on behalf of the governor.
Yeah, that's the amount that you could increase the value of a residential property, period. And I don't know if it includes apartment buildings or not.
It includes, the, the heart of it is, and Joe backed me up on this, is, this is California's legislation that was put in, um, when Ronald Reagan was governor. And it was put into Colorado a while back, and Colorado ended up changing it. Basically, what it does, and this is my interpretation of hearing it because Naco talked about it at this bill hearing Friday, if this year, in the conversations that's been happening with the assessor, um, we're at ninety-three percent. And to get us up, they're talking about raising it five percent. Under this bill, our assessed value market-wise could go up five percent. We would have to reduce it down to two. And this would be for every local entity. So whatever your revenue was, you cannot increase it more than three percent. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Yeah, and I think what I stated was that, in other words, you can't raise it, anyone's value more than if it's at four percent that year.
No, it's not the value.
Not the value, the total.
Total.
The value will go up. Your budget can't go any higher.
Okay.
Change the levy.
If it was some kind of, and California has it at one percent, and they've had it since, I think, the seventies as a constitutional amendment, it's been very detrimental at one percent. But it seems like, you know, some of these thirty percent increases that all of us have heard about in the last two weeks, I'm sure, causes people some problem. And I don't have a problem with looking at some kind of value increase that would limit it on an annual basis. Uh, so I just want to make that clear. If it was done in the right way and maybe a percentage, one percent is not enough to keep the schools and everything going, then I think it may be acceptable. So that's, I just wanted to clarify my position.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. This is exactly the kind of discussion I'm talking about. It, it's an important matter relative to our taxing authority, and it needs open discussion. This report that was referenced does not include any explanation for this bill, or this resolution beyond the one-liner. And the very competent legislative lobbyists that we employ are not here to inform us relative to where it is. It hasn't been set for hearing. We have time to do this correctly. We're missing Commissioner Boyle today, who valuable contribution to this discussion might help us form positions. There's no problem here in laying this over a week. And I, you know, I, I, I think that we could benefit possibly by having our lobbyists give us a complete rundown on each of these bills, not in these documents that we have before us, and maybe appear here in a week's time to give us an update on where they are. They're not set for hearing. We're not going to miss anything if we do that. But what we are going to be able to do is get more public information and, and input before the public on exactly what you're talking about, Commissioner Morgan, a very important tax question that people have opinions on, I'm sure, in light of the fact that everybody's receiving their property tax notices right now. This goes to the very heart of that, and we should have a, a public discussion on it. I would propose that we lay these over for a week and ask our legislative lobbyists to give us a report on these bills because they're not contained in these documents, and appear before us to help us with questions that we may have. I'd make that motion.
There's a motion. There's no second. With that, let me just point out, the lobbyists can't be here because they're in Lincoln lobbying. And just for the record, you know, these are the report that we've been presenting as the port that's been presented to us for years, and if the board ever wanted more, they could get more on that. That's, it's really unfair shot. With that, are there any, Commissioner Duda wanted to comment?
Thank you. I'm sorry that this conversation has, has become so ugly, but when we have a professional lobbyist in our midst, I don't know who he's really representing when he goes to Lincoln. He, he doesn't speak for the board. I don't know who he's paid to represent. And then he says he's not going to take a stand on any county issues. I'm more comfortable with that. I like that because I don't know who else is paying him to take stands on bills. And so I think in light of that, staying clean and out of ours is a good idea. But if you're going to do that, then why do you say, but we've got to lay this over till Mike Boyle gets back and we've got to have more of this and that? Are you, are you in or are you out?
Is that a question? Are you asking?
Well, um, no.
No, you're not. Because you don't want to have a real dialogue on this. You just want to throw accusations around.
Stop, stop. I'm clear. If you're finished, you got the floor.
I'm finished.
Okay. Anyone else got comments on any of these items? Please.
Five eighteen, North Fortieth Street. Other legislation, are, did you do that already? Are, are you going to do that?
Yes, that's, we're into the bills right now. If you got a question, I'll let you have it, but we're into, right now, if you've got something to say on some of those bills, discuss.
Okay.
Okay. With that, there's a motion on the second. Ma'am?
Hi, Nicole Leclerc, Bellevue, Nebraska. Um, I was at the meeting Thursday. It was a very telling meeting. Um, I only recommend.
Okay, ma'am, I'm gonna hold off. I'll, that was the last item, and because we're on to the motion of this, I'm gonna keep it there.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone to discuss on the motions on the floor? There is a motion to oppose items LB one oh three, LR eight c two, and LB five five zero. There's a motion, second? Please vote.
And I'm going to abstain for the reasons that this is a sham process that you're witnessing here. This is not a real informed public discussion about these bills. The fact that we don't have a lobbyist here has nothing to do with the fact that he's lobbying in Lincoln. He works for us. He could be here. We could easily do this properly in one week's time. But again, it's, the majority's wish to stifle public input on these important issues. I'm not going to participate in that. Uh, I have positions on these bills. I will express my own position because they can't stop you from exercising your right to free speech.
Please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh abstaining. Other commissioners voting yes. And, Mr. Chair, if I may, just on the resolution, we'll just basically use the same format, but edit it so it's just about LB twenty on the one, and then the other three remaining bills, if that's agreeable, so.
Thank you. Item C is LB two thirty-seven, LB two forty-five, and LB five twenty-two. Those are all to support. Is there a motion to support those numbers? Motion by Commissioner Borg, send her a second.
Seven.
Uh, any discussion on those? Anybody from the public want to comment on those?
I'm going to abstain on these as well, for the same reason. There's no discussion. You have no idea what these bills do. You're not going to hear it here today, and you're not going to read it in the backup documents that we have. There's another bill that we'll talk about before this is over, and we'll try to have some discussion on it. But again, there's no reason that we couldn't do this properly by laying it over a week, except that we have a majority that's not interested in letting the public have a clear idea of what's going on here. So I'm not going to participate in that, and I abstain.
Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh abstaining. Other commissioners voting yes.
Ma'am, ma'am, the item's passed, but if you want to very quickly say your comment, I will allow you to do that because the item you're talking on is passed. So if you can be, if you, if you will please be brief.
Nicole Leclerc, Nebraska. I was at the building commission meeting last week. It was a very telling meeting. It is unavailable online for people to watch. I, I think a lot of people would like to see that video because there were really good questions that were asked. It was voted down because the answers weren't presented, and the questions were basic questions. They weren't questions about the color of the carpet or what kind of chair. They were basic questions about the cost, who's running the 501(c)(3). And I really appreciate Amy Melton and Brinker Harding for asking those questions for their constituents, for Omaha, and for the taxpayers.
You want to say your name on the record?
Yeah, it was Nicole Leclerc. And I think today it's a little bit emotional because it didn't get voted. So I just, I mean, with these bills, I think you have a chance, I agree, Kavanaugh, Commissioner Kavanaugh, that you have a chance to hold off a little bit because the nail salon is getting a week. I think these deserve as much as the nail salon, so.
Thank you. Item D is discussion action on legislative bill five eighty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. Initially, I'm going to ask you to, to hold off on a vote supporting this simply because I, I learned late yesterday that the, the hearing on this isn't until the end of February. Uh, I have some information pushed out to various stakeholders on this. I'd like to get some input back on some potential issues that other people may have with this, uh, so that I can give you a more, I, I guess, a fuller description of, of those types of, of concerns. Uh, I'm happy to kind of go through some points of this today for you because I, I did ask.
Please do.
That, so would you like me to do that? Okay. Basically, this, this all goes back to the, the development of the Integrated Solid Waste Management Act back in the early nineteen nineties. As part of that, a fee on landfill tonnage, a dollar twenty-five per ton, was put in place. Fifty percent of that goes into a grant fund that's administered by the Department of Environmental Quality. The household hazardous waste facility here in Omaha under the sink that we are a partner with Omaha and Sarpy County in, that benefits from grant funds that help to fund some of the operational costs for that. We have to go through, or Omaha has to go through a grant process periodically to restore those funds or to continue getting those funds. What this looks at is, is kind of two-pronged. One, it would provide some additional funding that would be specifically earmarked for household hazardous waste facilities and special event, collection event, event-type things for household hazardous waste. It would then free up, and, and that particular pot of money would be subject to a rebate type of a process as opposed to a grant process. What that would then do is it frees up the money that was being used for household hazardous waste activities and allow that to be used for other things related to solid waste. We have a very neat, big need in this community and statewide for recycling infrastructure for other solid waste infrastructure. The trend across the country, which is growing, it seems, every day for companies not to throw stuff away in the landfill. And I think we, we have to recognize the fact that that's just where a lot of things are trending. So how do we offset landfill revenue loss? One of the ways is to grow economically and to provide more opportunities for recycled products to be utilized in the community so that those don't leave. And we see that this helps to fund some of those things to build the infrastructure. So that's, in a nutshell, kind of the intent of, of what's being proposed here. This got into the hot bird pretty late in the process, and so, again, I, I would like to, to reach out to folks across the state of Nebraska, in particular, those places that have household hazardous waste facilities and do events, and to get some additional input on this so that I can, I can share with you, uh, there's concerns on this. And, and being of the fact that this is, just got introduced, this is a new concept, um, I would expect, you know, it's, it's going to take a while to work this through. But those are my comments for now. Happy to entertain any questions.
Commissioner Craft, Kavanaugh, Morgan.
Yes, we'll be discussing that at committee meeting this afternoon, won't we not?
Uh, yes, I, yeah, I, I have this on the agenda to discuss about that a lot as well.
And since you, since this pertains to you and your department, I'd gladly wait it over, lay it over for, for one week. Is that what you're asking?
Um, it, it, it can be laid over two weeks, I think. If you're meeting in two weeks, I, I believe you are, on the twelfth, that would probably be, be adequate.
I will give you that. I most, make a motion to lay this over two weeks.
Second. This is a motion by Commissioner Craft, second by Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Thanks. And thanks for bringing this up. This is exactly an example of what I was talking about in terms of having a full and robust public discussion. And I don't think that we'll be harmed at all by laying this over. Wouldn't have been harmed by laying the others over as well. You bring up a very important point relative to the future of solid waste disposal in our community. We're currently engaged in that discussion in the city of Omaha context and as the folks who have the landfill, we're definitely very concerned about the point that you bring up. And I'm interested if there is an actual, right now, diminution in landfill revenues connected to a more definite increase in recyclables in our community. Is that happening now?
I can tell you, I don't think there's an accurate way to measure that.
Okay. You indicate, though, that that might be a concern going forward.
Well, it definitely is because over the past number of years, there is a decrease in, and I'm, it's not necessarily the amount of waste that's generated, it's the amount of waste that's going to the Douglas County landfill as being, as opposed to being taken other places.
Right.
And, you know, the resource value in that not being captured.
Right. But just in general, right now, has the tonnage going into the Douglas County landfill decreased, say, in the last couple of years?
Yes.
Okay. And do you know the reason for that?
From what I can tell, the primary reason is being diverted to other landfills.
Okay, not being diverted to recycling?
Correct.
Okay.
It absolutely is not being diverted to recycling at this point. You mentioned the city of Omaha contract, that that RFP comes in tomorrow and they will award a new collection contract for solid waste, recyclables, yard waste. That starts in January of 2021 at the latest. When they go to that automated cart system, that is historically going to result in about a doubling of the amount of recyclables that are collected because that's just what happens when you go from a non-automated to an automated cart system. So with that, there's going to be a need to handle more recyclables. There's an opportunity here to do that locally and to hopefully grow economically with new business opportunities and so on. Those types of things help to offset loss of landfill revenues.
Okay. And just in the interest of full disclosure here, I am doing work for the Sierra Club in part on the question of solid waste disposal in our community. And we are very much in favor of recycling as much of that. Recycle, reuse, and reduce the solid waste stream is the phrase that is used. So when we come to the question of encouraging what you're talking about, the transition here, how exactly does that work under the 580 scheme, LB 580? How does that encourage this recycling trend?
You have the current landfill tip fee of a dollar twenty-five. It's proposed to increase to $2. So that seventy-five cent differential is specifically designed in the bill to go into a specific pot that then is subject to a rebate program. A lot of household hazardous waste facility operational costs and special events that have been done in past years all have taken money from that grant fund, existing grant fund that's paid out of fifty percent of the dollar twenty-five. They've used those funds for operational purposes. What this proposes to do is to take those grant-funded activities for household hazardous waste, move them into this other piece that's funded by the seventy-five cent differential. That then frees up what was being used in the grant fund for household hazardous waste activities. That allows that money to then be available for other recycling infrastructure, other solid waste infrastructure, perhaps it's, you know, it's cost shares, profits, you know, it's incentive money for new businesses. Those, perhaps those types of things that make use of that money, that get to the same, you know, recycling goals and waste diversion, those types of things, with the hope that it is driving the local economics, the local programs, to be able to use those recyclables as opposed to, you know, having to collect them, ship them across the country someplace where we don't see economic activity and the benefits of that locally. So there's some stuff that I will talk about this afternoon in the committee meeting about circular economy and some of the things that are being discussed right now, some of the things that First Star Fiber and others in the community are working with right now to try to generate some of that economic activity. And again, that is a, an offset, hopefully, a piece that will offset some of the loss of landfill revenues.
Okay. Just so I understand, and we'll do this more in committee, I'm very interested in what you're saying. Could some of these funds be used to help us subsidize what heretofore has been our yard waste to composting to Omagro operation that has had some financial difficulties? Is that an example of what you're talking about in terms of subsidizing some of these?
I think there's an opportunity to look at utilizing some of those grant funds for those types of solid waste activities. I think that's a discussion to be had with DEQ and the folks that generate those grant funds. On the surface, I would say that that probably, I think it's a possibility.
Okay. My understanding is Lancaster currently already uses portions of a tipping fee to subsidize their yard waste to composting to Lincoln Grow, which is based on Omagro composting currently. Is that something that this could be used for in that fashion where tipping fees have not been charged in the Omagro context here locally?
The seventy-five cent differential piece that's being proposed here, that would not apply to what you just...
To yard waste?
Right, right. What it potentially would apply to is the remaining piece, that dollar twenty-five that would now be available for other things, perhaps like that.
And those are specifically the tipping fees for solid waste at the Pheasant Point site?
At any landfill across the state and any transfer station that is transferring solid waste out of state. They all have to pay that dollar twenty-five per ton fee.
Okay, but we don't have a tipping fee for yard waste currently, so it would not...
Specifically, yard waste, no.
Okay. Is it, as far as you know, and you don't have to answer if you don't, don't say you don't, if yard waste is referenced in LB 580?
It is not to my, in my read, no. It is not referenced in legislation.
Have we worked with Senator Hilkman to draft this bill?
Yes. I mean, okay, let me, I worked with a couple of other folks on the solid waste working group through Heartland 2050 and our Integrated Solid Waste Management Task Force. I worked with them, specifically Dale Gubbs with First Star Fiber. And there was former Senator Don Preister, who was part of that. And there was a couple of other folks on that group that had some input into that, suggested we should try to push forward and get this introduced. So yes, Senator Hilkman's office was involved in the drafting and that process. I'm not directly involved in that at all.
Okay. And we'll come back to this, you know, I think your idea of laying it over is smart. But generally speaking, this sounds like a positive legislative initiative. Is that correct?
Well, I feel it's positive for Douglas County because it potentially provides us some additional pot of money that's a little more sustainable, in my view, because it's subject to a rebate process as opposed to a grant process. Historically, and certainly in recent years, where we've seen the governor and the legislature raid funds and take them away from their intended purposes to try to balance the budget. And that's another story. But the reality is, is that here's a program, household hazardous waste facility that was set up to do a certain amount of things. And having more sustainable funding for it, reliable funding, my view is a good thing. And as a side benefit, it frees up some of the other monies to be used for grants that could do some other things that, locally, that would benefit the county in terms of building economic development.
And I think I heard you say that there's not a hearing scheduled probably till the end of February. So that normally say there's not a fiscal note on this bill yet. Do you have any way to calculate just broadly what the fiscal impact would be for Douglas County in terms of additional revenues?
I will be better prepared to answer that here in two weeks. I'm still compiling a little more information on this, which includes information from across the state on how much has gone into household hazardous waste facilities and so on, and making sure that that, that this truly is going to be, you know, you have the numbers in front of you to show you what the impacts are.
Great, thank you.
Is there a motion laid over two weeks?
Yes.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Craft, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Actually, we already did that.
We did, we did, sorry. Please vote.
Motion passes, six to zero.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Yeah, just under the legislative rubric, we have this bill that I referenced before, and there's copies that Marcos has provided for us, that, like the bill that we just talked about, has the potential to provide additional revenues to Douglas County. And I'd ask that it be set for the discussion that we're going to have in a couple of weeks on 580 is probably time enough. It does not have a hearing date. But LB 710 provides for an increase in the state cigarette tax. And on page 12, number roman numeral 26, line 19 to 21, you'll see that it was very specifically drafted to direct four percent for beds in county hospitals and county-owned health centers for mental health treatment in counties containing the city of the metropolitan class and a county-owned health center. That would be us. And so this is, again, a potential that the state would establish a new revenue stream dedicated to something that we've been discussing for a long time but haven't been able to get anything done on in terms of providing long-term mental health care beds here. This is something that is like this, one that we just talked about, going to be new revenue available to us on a long-term basis under a dedicated revenue stream. And I'd ask that we put that on our agenda for discussion in two weeks along with 580.
All right, with that, we'll go to item three. Item three for the rule changes, we'll take them one at a time. Resolution, item three is a resolution to approve and change the rule number seven. Theresa.
Theresa, York County Attorney's Office. So this rule change simply has a typographical correction and then also putting into the rule what's been happening in practice, which is that during very, very long meetings, the chair has had to, for the efficiency of the meeting, shorten the length of debate. And the rule only provides for the extending of the length of debate and not the shortening. So it simply puts into, puts into the rule what's been happening in practice due to long meetings.
What's the will of the board?
It's a motion to approve by Craft, second by Morgan. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes, I'm going to oppose this. It adds on to a very flawed rules setup that we've had here for some time. I've been proposing rule changes for a couple of years, and we'll get to one here in a minute that will help make a rational system out of what is pretty much devolved into what the chairman says goes. And so this is, again, been used, as the county attorney indicated, ad hoc already, without a rule, and indiscriminately. We've objected to this, I've objected to this repeatedly, because there's no rule to this rule. It's just whatever the chairman wants, that's who gets to speak, however long they get to speak, that's what the chairman wants. And however short they get to speak, that's what the chairman wants. It's one person deciding. And that's not a rule under any accepted parliamentary rules that are in use in democratic settings around the world. So I'm going to object to this and have more to say as the rule discussion goes forward.
There's a motion, second, please vote.
Excuse me.
Louis, sorry.
I don't want to take over.
Well, I didn't, well, I thought you were coming.
Five eighteen North Fortieth Street. Excuse me, I did want to speak on other legislation in the committee, but I may have missed it. But concerning on item three, it says, I heard the county say it's to do with long meetings. And so if an item is on the agenda during a long meeting, comments can be shortened on the public's part? I mean, I've been limited in my discussions during the board meetings. I don't appreciate that. I'm actually going to file a complaint with you guys on it. So if this is for procedure and not editorializing citizens' comments, I can understand what you're trying to do. There's ways to handle that. You can, like, move an item in the beginning, you know, at an earlier time on your agenda. But seriously, limiting comments on the public's part, it's not good for Douglas County, specifically because of Omaha, where most of the people live civically, in a civic setting. And they want the opportunity to speak to others. The public wants the opportunity to speak to others, and in particular, to the commissioners. And whether that's to a record or not, I mean, that's, it's whatever. I'd rather get my message to you guys. And so if you delimit, if you limit discussion, what are, what's actually happening to the individual? You're concerned about your meetings, but in a city setting, we want space to speak to others, really do. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, other commissioners voting yes.
Item four, resolution to approve and change the rule to rules of order. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes, this is a follow-up to the discussion that we just had. So in lieu of this hodgepodge of ad hoc rules that basically boil down to, the chairman, we'll make up the rules as the chairman sees as fit as we go along. This puts in place widely-accepted parliamentary rules, Roberts Rules of Order, which are used worldwide again in parliamentary procedure proceedings, and have widely-accepted parameters for the powers of the chair. I think this will help us move away from what has been very contentious use of personal prerogatives by the chairman to extend the testimony of people whose testimony he likes and to curtail the testimony of people he doesn't like, to the extent of really using language for people who he likes that's very complimentary and language for people he doesn't like that's very non-complimentary. It shouldn't be a personal thing. This is a public forum. Everybody should be treated equally here. People should not be cautioned on the tenor of their remarks simply because the chairman doesn't think they're going to talk to support positions he has. And that's happened here. We've all seen it. In the last year, we've seen people threatened with being removed by the guards, literally, for the exercise of their First Amendment rights. for the exercise of their First Amendment rights. So, in order to move away from that personal prerogative, Rogers Rules of Order that we've been working with, I propose that we adopt Roberts Rules of Orders, which are, in fact, parliamentary procedure as they are practiced, as the best practices are recognized around the world. That's the purpose of rule two, and that would replace the hodgepodge of rules that we currently have, and we're being asked today to amend, to make it even more of a personal prerogative set of rules, and make it just something that's fair for everybody, and allows us to have a real free and open expression of our participatory government and free speech rights here at the Douglas County Board.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Well, again, I'm going to oppose this because the comments that were just made are filled with, again, falsities. Commissioner Rogers has not done that at all. That is not the purpose of asking someone to hurry up their comments. It's not personal. Actually, think about what you just said there, Commissioner Kavanaugh, making things personal. The other thing is, is that the removal by the guards, that was not the reason that they were removed. They were removed because they ran up to the podium, and the folks that are here are, that's their training, is to get in front of people who approach the podium in such a way. So again, let's talk in the facts, not made up facts, but the real facts.
Commissioner Morgan.
My understanding in these rules is the fact that the citizens have five minutes, whether they're a proponent, opponent, whatever, and somebody can correct me. Secondly, I believe, and I've wanted this, I mentioned it several years ago, I wanted to limit the commissioners to five minutes, and I stated that publicly years ago when I got here, that we have the same rules for myself as we have for the public, because that's who we work for. And these rule changes will adhere to that, so that if I'm going more than five minutes, that's it, and I want you to cut me off, the chairperson that happens to be the chairperson in the future or right now. And I think that you'll never see me as chairman of this board, even if I was nominated to be. I really respect the job that the chairperson has and the challenges they face each week. And the one thing that, you know, some of the city boards do is they don't let people, and they request it at the beginning of their meeting, that they don't come up and make the same statements over and over again, and the repetition, you know, of repeating. So I think that five-minute rule is in here for ourselves and for the public, and that's what I understand the chairperson's going to do, period. Perfect.
Please.
I'm going to try a different tack, come down on the left side of the aisle this time. And I resent the fact that I'm making up facts, Marianne.
That what?
I resent the fact that I'm making up facts, and I resent the fact that I'm a paid lobbyist. I'm not a lobbyist, I'm a taxpayer, okay?
I'm not talking about you. Claire, just.
Please, please. Many years ago, there was a pamphlet called Common Sense, and it raised the ire of a lot of patriots out there, common people. This agenda rules that you have printed on the one that's handed out as I come in the door today, does not make common sense with what's been going on here. Right now, this does not say that there's a debate. It does not say there's a discussion or a public comment, but you're allowing people to do it, just like you did with Doug Kagan. That did not say public comment at that time. It said discussion amongst you people. It's not clear. It did not say discussion between you and I. It did not say I could come up and think. And your email to me this morning implies otherwise. It's not, what you sent to me this morning is not commonly understood, because it's not printed in here, and excuse me, that's why there's hardly any citizens here.
Go ahead and read what I said.
I don't have it in front of me. But it wasn't anything like what's printed in this agenda, the rules. You say I could come up and debate your rules that are printed in this handout right out front there, say no, that we will not discourse. So, you know, I'm through with that. But don't call me dishonest, don't call me racist, and don't say I'm making up facts, and don't say I'm a lobbyist. I'm a taxpayer. And do you think the taxpayers didn't throw the king off for the same type of thing? The king did not listen, did he?
I will never call you a lobbyist.
They gave him two or three chances, and they finally said, to hell with the king, we're writing a Declaration of Independence. This is my Declaration of Independence as a taxpayer. Change your rule. Oh, here it is, I'm sorry, can I read it? Because something told me I'm not supposed to read.
Well.
But here it is. My understanding is citizens make them up to a podium on items on the agenda. Read the agenda, it says otherwise. And comment, or ask questions. Excuse me, when do you let me ask questions? And commissioners can comment on what I'm saying, as long as it's on the agenda, but on the agenda it says it has to be not on the agenda. You see where there's three walnut shells up here?
And Chris, just.
I'm not quite through with your email, but I did ask in mind to have you print it in the record. I'm just almost done with your email.
Perfect.
Five minutes for a citizen to comment, and I have suggested several times, as you just said, over the years, that the same should apply to commissioners. I will likely state that again today, thank you. Lastly, with items not on the agenda, a citizen can come to the podium, comment five minutes, then the commissioners have been advised publicly by the county attorney not to comment. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Louis Seepman, 518, North 40th Street. When I go to public meetings, I want to learn, I want to be educated, I want to be civically engaged. You could say I'm looking for examples. The county needs it, Douglas County needs examples, good examples of how you make decisions, because it's not just you guys making decisions today. It's everybody here in Douglas County, for ourselves and for others. Roberts Rules of Order provides an extensive resource for conducting your meetings, where you make your decisions for us, for the county. It's unfortunate in my mind, because I go to city council, I've been to the Nebraska Legislature, that I take a look at your rules, and that's what I get, a few pages. When you're making so many decisions for the people in Douglas County, it's a lot of people here in Nebraska, and I'm not telling you guys how, I don't want to tell you guys how you come to your decisions. But what Roberts Rules of Order does is brings this together in a way that has been proven in the past to work. That's what the author of Roberts Rules of Order did. He looked at, at the time, how meetings were being conducted. This was days ago, a long time ago. Some people here are disappointed that Roberts Rules of Orders have not been adopted for the Douglas County Board. It's tried and true, I've heard some say, and when I, for myself, am able to operate, I appreciate it, I appreciate the preparedness that the document and the arrangements in there provide. I encourage you guys to vote for this because it's a great example you can set for citizens on how to make decisions. And, and also because some of you, and you, particularly Mr. Chair, you said that you wanted these rules for the board in the past, so we're here. I don't want to wait another year to have another discussion on this. I want 2019 to be a year for learning, educating, seeing examples, and taking care of ourselves and having healthy discussions. Thank you.
Anyone else? With that, there's a motion, second. Well, there's no motion, a second. What's the, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I made a motion to adopt the Roberts Rules of Order that you have before you in attachment one, rule two, rules of order.
There's a motion, is there a second? Motion dies for like a second. Moving on to item five, resolution to approve and change to various rules and rules of order. Let me state by saying that, you know, I think anybody that sits in the chair tries to be fair to everyone. I wish I was as ruthless as I just got betrayed. There's times I wish I was that ruthless, because I wish I had, I wish I had a little bit of Richard Daley in me, the first Richard Daley, not the second. And basically, I'm proposing these to get at some consistency that was actually mentioned to some degree. So the key things in here, the, one of the big key things that's changed, and I've taught individuals about, and this is a debate rule, and that debate rule in consultation with legal counsel also puts us in the consistent format that will be exercised if it's passed today. Now, let me just note to everybody, I think there was a point made that I supported Roberts Rules, yeah. When I was my first year on the board, in 2005, I supported it, and the board pushed back. So we came to a compromise on parliamentary procedure, the spirit of that, which has Roberts Rules accompanying in, so you got that as the basis. Let me say also that, you know, the rule of, the debate rule that's proposed in here is proposed because there are, there's state law, there's constitutional law, and then there's a manual, called the Mason's Manual, that's used to kind of help legislatures make their own rules based on legal opinions from across the country and where they pan. So this is the basis that comes for that. And there is no time that in a public body, that a public citizen can be denied of comment on an item, and that has not happened, will not happen. Basically, from here on out, just to know what the, the major change in this, other than the cleanup, is that the rule that's being proposed is that it takes a little bit from the legislature, it takes a little bit from the city, and it takes a little bit from the city planning. The rule that's going to be proposed from here on out for debate is, if there's a motion, that introducer gets five minutes to introduce that motion. Citizens will come up, and we will have proponents and opponents, they will have their five minutes to comment, and a commissioner can ask that person questions related on that item. After that person comments, they will no longer be able to comment, and everyone after will be encouraged not to repeat, but do, but make their comment. Then after that, commissioners will be able to go at five minutes for two times, which will give them a total of 10 minutes, and I think that should be way more than enough. And then the person that introduced it will be able to close. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion from the board. Is there a motion by Commissioner Duda?
Second.
Is there a second by Commissioner Morgan?
And could I ask one thing?
Can we ask a request that maybe when we're talking, we can see the light too, so we know how it's going?
Sure will.
That it be turned on for us, if it's not too much trouble? Thank you. So we know to stop, okay?
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
And we're on this document, is that correct?
We are.
Okay. I have a few questions, and I presume you're the drafter, so I'll ask them of you. In page two of this document, where you have a list of committees, the chairs, I'll also appoint one or more board members to sit on each of the following boards and committees. If you go down this, struck from this list is the Greater Omaha Convention and Bureau, Visitors Bureau Advisory Board.
Right.
Why is that?
That was put in place when Mayor Sutter was mayor, and that point, there was an advisory council created, and there was asked for a county board member to be there because of our stake in the CBB. That has gotten disbanded, so it hasn't been appointed, and with that, I've removed it.
Okay, so that advisory board no longer exists?
No longer exists.
Okay. And then the Omaha Community Partnership, below that is struck as well?
No longer functions, no longer functions.
Okay. And then below that, Consolidated Services Committee?
No longer functions.
Okay. And so these have been abolished sometime before these rules, correct?
No, they, there's just a part of, in looking through the rules, doing some cleanup. These committees have not been functioning, and nobody has been getting appointed to them.
But they don't exist, is that?
They don't exist.
Yeah, okay. And down below, under rule, roman numeral four, E, it strikes, and the I-80 Council? Why is that?
My understanding is that it's no longer functioning or exists.
Okay. Then, on page five, I believe this is what you just spoke to, is that right?
Yes.
Rule, debate. On items requiring discussion slash action, the process for debate is as follows. One, introducer of the item may speak up to five minutes when he or she first presents the item to the Board of Commissioners. Two, the board will hear from proponents and then opponents. Parenthesis, citizens are encouraged not to repeat previous comments slash testimony, close parentheses. No additional comments slash testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. Three, the introduced item shall be motioned and seconded to proceed to debate. Four, each commissioner shall be allowed to speak on introduced item up to two times for no more than five minutes. And five, the introducer of the item shall be permitted five minutes to close debate. That's an entirely new rule, correct?
It is.
And that rule will be invoked at the prerogative of you, the chairman, is that right?
That will.
Then, on page six, the chairs shall appoint the following committees, whose membership may consist of two or three commissioners. So the committees under this board don't have all of the board serving on them, is that what I interpret from that reading?
No, the history of this is, before I got on the board, when I became on the board in '05, the committees went by a point of appointing members to the committee. At that point, it was just agreed to by the board and continuing chairs that there would be a chair, and each member could attend those committee meetings that they wanted to. So no chair since then has actively since appointed members, they've appointed chairs.
Okay. This, I don't know if this is just a typographical distinction, or if it means something, but the list of committees and their oversight, and the list of committee assignments that we have in our book is not the same. Is there some reason for that?
No, they match up the same. This has been the same since my 14 years here, and I, I don't think it changed in the years that the Marianne O'Clare has been here.
Okay, well, just to take an example, Human Relations, number seven, under this authorized committee rule, reads, human relations, benefits, civil service, insurance, IT, technology, labor relations, and legislative. And that's the same as it appears in this document. The committee just above it, Health and Human Services Committee, reads here, general assistance, veterans. And in the document that we have in our book, it's general assistance, health department, Douglas County Health Center, community mental health, veterans. That's not the same.
No, I think it says to some degree that those items that you add in red should, will for agenda purposes be placed under that for agenda purposes.
What does that mean?
That means if there's an item that needs to be discussed, it'll be placed under that agenda, it'll be placed under Health and Human Services from the agenda, so for instance.
What does that mean in terms of?
That means if, that means the Health Center has a separate Board of Trustees. That means the Board of Health has a separate Board of Trustees. For items that aren't consent and that need to be put on the agenda, specifically for those items, they will be put under that. For items that aren't consent and that need to be put on the agenda specifically for those items, they will be put under that committee.
Okay, so the Health and Human Services Committee will have hearings on the Health Department?
No.
Will it have hearings on the Douglas County Health Center?
No.
Will it have hearings on Community Mental Health Center?
Well, let me rephrase.
Well, is that, yes or no?
Well, no, it's rephrased because the jurisdiction of those are in the Board of Health. If, you know, I think if it's the, if the Board of Trustees wants to partner with that committee to have something, that can be innovatively done. But they don't have jurisdiction over that.
Yeah. So this is a change because this was not heretofore the scope of jurisdiction of this committee, and it's not reflected as a change even in these rules, even in these rules.
That's not a change.
So I'm just noting that because what you're doing here is enhancing the personal prerogative of Mr. Rogers at the expense of any rational form of rulemaking here. You're going to have that for the next year at least, and that's an example of it. Rule nine, Roman numeral nine, on page seven, under Functions of Committees, F, "All matters regarding committee jurisdiction shall be resolved by the Chair and Vice Chair." Committee meeting notice shall not be published until all jurisdictional matters are resolved. What does that mean?
Well, from my tenure on the board, matters of jurisdiction have always been handled cordially between members. There's times when I've questioned you on that jurisdiction, and your response was, "I didn't have the authority to do that." But everybody on the board member agreed that that was the precedent. So this is just a response to codify what action has always been respected by the board in the past.
So specifically, this goes to public hearings that we held on the Juvenile Justice Center Building Proposal in the Administrative Services Committee. Those hearings will not be allowed anymore unless the chairman allows them. Chairman's not going to allow them. This is another example of concentration of personal prerogative power under the chairman at the expense of the rest of the board and the public. These discussions are going to be terminated. You're not going to have them. Health Department.
Hold on, hold on, that's wrong.
Douglas County Health Center.
That's wrong.
You're not going to have those discussions on why don't we have any mental health bits? We're not done. I'm just asking questions on the rules. This is a rules debate.
And I'm asking you questions.
I haven't asked you a question. I am about to ask you one. On rule, Roman numeral 12, on page eight, we have, I'm sorry, rule 13, "Notification of Vacancies to Boards and/or Committees." And page nine, Douglas County Boards and Commissions', "Appointment Policy." We have no term limits on any boards and commissions. Is that correct?
No.
Okay. And we have people that have served for decades, generations really, on boards and commissions. So again, you're not going to have any new insight into committees that have been set up and really operating under the radar for a very long time, because people can serve there for life. That's not the case in any other not-for-profit or governmental board and commission agenda items that you want. These rules represent a concentration of personal power under the personal prerogative of Mr. Rogers, and they will be run by him the way he wants it to run. You will not have committee hearings on the Juvenile Justice Center. You will not have committee hearings on mental health, lack of mental health services in Douglas County. You will not have committee hearings on whether or not we should have a public bond proposal on the ballot next May. This is a shutdown of free speech. That's what these rules represent. We had an opportunity to have the Roberts Rules of Orders. These are the Rogers Rules of Orders. Welcome to the new world. This isn't going to last. I don't think the public's going to stand for this. But for now, what you're going to see, what you're about to see, is the further concentration of personal prerogative under the aegis of Mr. Rogers.
You know, that's just shamefully disingenuous. So let's go to your first question. The precept-like hearings won't happen. I mean, I think to your point of saying that, you know, my 14 years here, I've never remembered this issue coming up once at all. So, you know, I did codify it because there were several instances where you were conflicted with people, and you respected some people and you didn't the other. I thought that was wrong, and I, this is where that's there. Now, let me just say to some degree that there's a committee meeting next week where the item should have been under Child New Savers, and we're going to have a discussion there about the scope of the new designs that are happening. So, you know, I think the, and opportunities in the past, designs, and information has come here. So that's, you know, just very disingenuous, but, you know, if you want to portray me as the all-powerful and increase my reputation, I'll take it. Please.
Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. Am I to understand, Mr. Chair, that the process by which these, this item was put on the agenda is that you, in 2005, wanted to have Roberts' Rules of Order? You weren't able to put it forth, so there was a compromise where you would work with the powers at B or to B, or whatever it is, and to incrementally progressively change the rules of order of the board? Is this how?
No.
This came about?
No. You know, my membership has lapsed, so I need to get it back active, but I came with that.
Membership to where?
I came with that idea because I was a member of the Nebraska Association of Parliamentarians, and I added to put that as a structural rules. And after conversation with some board members, they, they didn't want all of that because it wasn't pertinent. Pertinent, no government entity. Some government entities do, but most government entities do not adopt that as that. They have some other rules to some degree. So the group came to agreement of the line that's somewhere in here that I can't find that says, "In the spirit of parliamentary procedure." That gets you everything that Roberts' Rules does.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue with you, but, you know, the board, the board made its decision on the previous deal, so continue.
Okay. Well, what happens when you're not on the board? How are the Rules of Order going to be looked at, reviewed, and amended or changed?
This is the thing, Luis, the rules of the board are the rules of the board. And everything under state law gives, gives organized bodies, elected bodies, the ability to set their own rules of debate. So, and the rules are they govern themselves, that they don't conflict with the Constitution, state statute, or anything of that matter. So that's, it's an enforced prerogative. If somebody comes along and they want to propose it again, it'll be proposed.
Okay, well, would you not insult our intelligence? This is not how rules of order or rules are put together. You have one item there that, we're going to call it, "This has been addressed this year." Item five. Item three, okay, fine. But item five is the only thing that this year is going to address your Rules of Order. That's not how rules are made. They are continually looked at, continually looked at. Read Roberts' Rules of Order. You know that.
Luis, every year, we, well, let me ask you a question. Every year, the legislature adopts Rules of Order, Nebraska Legislature.
They have a Rules Committee?
Yeah. Every year, this board has, has offered up rules changes to be made. That's this. Every year, it's been done.
Okay, but number five was not put together by committee?
No, it's never been done by committee. Members have been asked to propose.
Because in 2005.
No, let me finish.
You made a compromise.
Let me finish, no. 2005, 2005.
That's what you said earlier in the meeting.
2005 only refers to Roberts' Rules of Order. Every year, board members are asked, once offices are set, "Do you have any rules changes?" That's just the process that we're going through now, and that's it.
Okay, well, that's not a good process. It's not good practice. And when you're not on the board, Mr. Rogers, there should be a committee put together to look at this. There should be a committee today continuing to refine the rules, not just you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Morgan?
I was just going to say, you know, your request of all of us to participate is with ideas about the rules. I made that suggestion about something from the city's rules, do you? And also about the five-minute limit on us? I mean, so we do have input, and then the rest of the board decides, hey, should we do that or not? And if there weren't any support for the five-minute limit on us, a majority, it wouldn't be in there. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
So we do all participate. It isn't just you deciding, well, PJ requested that, I'm not doing it. That's the end of it. No, I talked to the other commissioners, and we have an understanding that there's support for that. Sorry, Dan.
Oh, it's okay. Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. And normally, Chair Rogers, I would have given you a heads up if I had questions, but I didn't really think of things until we got here today. So who, who is going forward, just so I know if I'm supposed to be doing something? Who is keeping track of the five minutes just?
I will. The chair will. It was the chair.
And then you'll, the chair will also keep track of the, if it's the second time, that's obviously not hard to keep track of, but, you know. And then, when, if a board member is engaging with a proponent or an opponent, does that count towards their? That would not count as a one-time or a second time?
You can ask questions if you want.
Okay. I think that was all I had. Just want to make sure I had this straight, so, all right.
The point is not to stifle any questions. Anyone else?
I don't think I've ever gotten up twice. Nicole Leclaire, Bellevue, Nebraska. So the majority of you received a no to your request. Nicole Leclaire already did, so. You received a no for your $120 million bond, and I'm imagining the majority of you are not happy about that. And I, what I'm witnessing or seeing today is kind of the punishment of Commissioner Kavanaugh. And I feel like the silencing of him and taking away the, his right to say what he thinks and believes, and also any of us who might agree with him and not with you. And this is a bubble of a meeting and a bubble of a room. It's so tiny. It's so tiny. The world is bigger than this room and this meeting, and the world is watching you. And the world that's watching you are your constituents, who can vote you in and vote you out. And I feel like you have every opportunity to continue to redeem yourself and make it more welcoming for citizens to be here. And all I hear is, "No, no, no. We don't want you here." It's very discouraging.
Anyone else?
I haven't said anything today, and maybe it's time. I'm Norma Leclaire from Bellevue, Nebraska, and I've grown a lot older coming to the meeting. And I do want to point out, when there is something that the public is really interested in, it would be really nice to somehow make it available to the public to speak in a timely manner. And I know you want to hear from the public, but when I have seen all of these people around me going out, plugging their meters, coming back, waiting, four and a half hours, and then there's no time left for public comment. And I think that, that facet needs to really be addressed. And if you see a lot of your people out here, find out why they're here and what their interest is, and do some shifting around on that agenda. Thank you.
Anyone else? There's Commissioner Duda? There's motion second. Please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Quickly.
Okay. There will be a community service meeting half an hour after our executive session ends, so people have a chance to grab a bite. And I do want to say that as far as the five minutes being able to be extended or reduced, when I was on the city council, we had a debate on the smoking issue many times. And we had a three-minute rule. We used to have a three-minute rule here while Mr. Kavanaugh and all of us were here. So we had a three-minute rule up to last year or the year before. I don't recall. We decided to give people more. When I was doing the smoking ordinance for the city of Omaha, by the end, everybody had said everything. So instead of three minutes, okay, instead of three minutes, we started limiting people to two minutes, then to one minute, because it was all repetitive. So it still lasted because we're, this room was full, and the lunchroom downstairs was full. And I mean full. We lasted till almost midnight after starting at two. And we could have gone longer had we not exhausted the public speaking at one minute each. So I do not think the five-minute rule is unreasonable for both us, congress limits, congressmen to limit time. I don't know what it is, but I've seen them say, "Your time is up." And so now we have to learn how to be more concise. And instead of repeating something 31, 32 times, we can say it once. Instead of pontificating about what we used to do in the past, we can concentrate on what we're doing now. And, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a need for the executive session for items of real estate and labor. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second, and by Commissioner Kraft to go into executive session for real estate and labor. Please vote.
Motion passes, six to zero.
And again, we're going to executive session for real estate and labor. And again, we're going to executive session for real estate and labor.